I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Marty, will you do roll call attendance please?
Mary Jo Roskiewicz?
Here.
Mary Jo Redd?
Here.
Penny Jacobson?
Here.
Troy Webb?
Here.
Amy Huckman?
Here.
Anne Deemer?
Here.
Brad Dobbs?
Here.
And has the meeting been noticed for public, to the public according to open meeting laws?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have one item I'd like to move forward, focus on purpose. I moved to move 7.1 before gifts and grants because the music department people are here. We'll get to have them present. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Public comment, is there anyone who would like to address the board of something that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to our music department presentation.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming, you guys. Usually we've got the PowerPoint presentation, hopefully people took the chance to listen to the clips in there.
Yeah, it was good.
This microphone doesn't necessarily amplify you in the room, but it helps you to record and talk a lot. Yeah, introductions built in there somewhere, but take it away.
I'm Stephanie Coles and I teach elementary music and sixth grade choir at the middle school.
I am Jody Gavron and I teach kindergarten, first and second grade music at Red Creek and Forest Street.
I'm Matt Schluntz, I'm the new choir director at the high school and the middle school.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Not that we don't appreciate all of you, not just all, it's just exciting to round out the team.
I'm Paul Inushel, I'm the band director at the high school.
And I'm Troy Tandy and I teach band at the middle school.
Okay, in a, in a non-COVID year, students usually receive music three times in a six-day rotation at the elementary. This year they receive it two times in a six-day rotation, so it's 60 minutes this year. But we do serve all students K through five.
In a non-COVID year, students have opportunities to perform throughout the year. So we normally do holiday programs in December and Red Creek always does a Veterans Day program. Fourth and fifth graders usually march and sing in the homecoming parade. And this year we were able to do our Veterans Day program virtually and there was a little clip of it that you'll see in just a bit.
In the last, I guess it was in 2018, we picked out new curriculum and had it approved for the music department. And our curriculum is called Game Plan and it's a very hands-on, active curriculum that we really, really like. And it has, it includes a lot of different music philosophies, including Orphe and Kodai. And it has a lot of games and folk songs and dances in it and then lots of opportunities for the kids to play music. So it's a really engaging curriculum and we did include, one of the examples that is in here is one of the orf things that is from the book. So our ongoing curriculum work that we've kind of been working on is, is taking our new curriculum. And we had completed that in 2017, but now we're kind of wanted to teach the new curriculum a little bit before we kind of put all the pieces together and kind of meld them. And so we've been working on that, Jody and I have been doing that. So I'll let you share.
In case you don't know, orf, the orf philosophy uses the mallet instruments and there are many different sizes of them. They either have wooden bars or metal bars and the nice thing about them is we can take off the bars that we don't want to use and then anything the kids play sounds good. So we teach the mallet technique and, well, I meant, it sounds good together.
You're scaffolding them for success, that's what you meant.
And Kodai, the Kodai philosophy is built on folk songs and it teaches the kids note reading, rhythms and a lot of good singing technique.
This is quite, that, when you said in a non-COVID year, that was... If you have never attended the Veterans Day program at Red Creek Elementary School, it is a hallmark in the community for sure that it's been very, very, very widely attended. And so I would still be pleased that you guys are willing to put something together virtually so that those people still felt engaged and celebrated and honored and all that stuff. You guys as a department have been so creative, you're trying to find ways for our kids to still musically represent and to engage and have fun opportunities.
For a middle school band, this year is an interesting year, but normally we would have, well, we still have three bands, one per grade level. In a normal year, bands would meet two to three times a week. And then they would also have a 20-minute small group lesson with their instrument group so that it can work on, you know, just the trumpet kids or just the clarinet kids or whatever they might be. And so that's normally what we would have. This year, we still try to get the, the lesson in and we meet one day a week this year just due to the shortened day and how it fits in our schedule. So we meet Mondays with the seventh grade and Wednesdays with the, with the eighth grade. And that's as, as the large group. And then we're working on sixth grade, we should be able to, be able to meet with them as a group here soon, I'm hoping. So moving along a little bit slower this year though. At the beginning of the year, oh.
Can I go back?
No, that's fine, we can go to the next one. This would be some of the things that we do with the middle school band as far as performances. We do a homecoming parade, holiday concert, middle school soul and ensemble, spring concert. And then every other year we do a Memorial Day ceremony in Hickston. So we've done that for, for as long as I can remember. So this year we've had to be very creative. At the beginning of the year, we started playing outside, out in the blacktop area toward the football field on the end of the theater down there. And we played to get going in the beginning of the year through about the end of October. And I know they were outside in November for a little bit, but prior to that, it was in the, you know, twenties and thirties in the morning when, when we would meet at the end of October. So we had to start moving inside. And so since at that time, we couldn't play inside yet because of the health concerns. So this year, I had to have something. So we, I remember back from college and general music methods, we talked about ukulele and using ukulele for, for general music classes. And so that was kind of my idea to try to use. And so we started in November for a few weeks doing ukulele lessons with the, the band students. And we did that, we had a lot of fun with it and then we had to go virtual. So then I don't have enough ukuleles for everybody. So then we did the small group lessons while we did individual lessons for kids that would do that during that virtual time. Then we came back in January, we kind of finished off our ukulele lesson, our, our unit. And then now we just were able to start playing inside with PPE and physical distancing in the Lunda Theater. And we actually just started like two weeks ago and I have a little clip. We were so excited to be able to play inside the, inside the building and to be able to play as a group again. It was wonderful. So February 1st, the, the seventh grade band, I just, I just quick, made a little quick video. This is our first rehearsal since October. What's that?
Do you have to have the horns covered?
Yeah, I don't know if you can see them, all the instruments have bell covers on the ends and they have... That's, it's working so far, so that's good.
And again, the willingness for them to continue to think outside of the box. I mean, getting kids to corral with their instruments for the first couple of times is one thing, but then to figure out what new PPE needs and looks like and how to find it and how to afford it, all of those pieces. They've really done a great job. Have you played the ukulele yet?
Sure, yeah. This is, this is one of my groups, the eighth grade group. What would happen is typically I would sing along with them while they were playing.
Obviously does that translate into playing guitar?
Um, I would say it's the same principles. So yeah, they learn how to read like a finger chart for that and yes. And it's just a way to keep us having a musical experience that we can do while we were inside when we couldn't play our other instruments, so.
Still make rhythm, still make the music, still make notes, that's what we do.
Accompaniment and melody.
So middle school choir looked different this year at the beginning of the year too. They, normally the schedule was going to be set up that I could go there every day and just work with sixth grade, but we didn't have somebody to work with seventh and eighth. And so we split up the groups, sixth, seventh and eighth, and they met twice in a six-day rotation. And we met on the stage, which is an interesting place to teach a class. It's kind of dark because you can't, there's like nobody to go up in the booth and turn all the lights on for you and all those things. So you're just coming in fast and you just have to just kind of go with what you got. And kids can see better up there than I can, I'll tell you that. So they don't struggle as much as I do, but my eyes were kind of failing me. So Paul was nice enough to get me a, a little lamp for the piano, so that was nice. But they continued to meet with that and, and we worked on some music, but we never put together any programs or concerts. I think that they are, would be very excited to be able to do that. And Matthew and I have started talking about being able to do that for spring. And so we're hopeful that maybe we could do, even if it had to be outdoors at the end of the year, maybe possibly we could go to the Lunda Park and do that. So that's kind of what our goal is right now. We're working on getting the kids ready for something like that. So we'll be starting on that in the next couple of weeks. So that's kind of what's happening at the middle school right now. I'm trying to think, is there another slide, Jill, for middle school?
Yep.
So our numbers are really down this year in choir. Our signup was virtual for fifth graders last year. Like, so we just had to push out emails to parents and say, do you want your kids to be in choir? So I don't even know if everybody knew that it was an option, you know, because I don't know if everybody was paying attention to all the emails that came through or not. So on a normal year, we would have about 48, 50 kids in sixth grade choir and about 25 in the seventh and eighth grade each, 25 in seventh, 25 in eighth. And this year we're about 40 students total. But I will tell you, at the beginning of the year, when I looked at my list of the 25 kids that I was supposed to have, half of them were virtual. So there was 12 of them that were never, never came to school. And so that took the numbers down real quick. So that's been interesting. But we are excited about trying to put together a program and we're looking forward to that, so. In a normal year, middle school does about four performances, fall concert, winter concert, taco supper in February and then a spring concert in May. And then sixth, seventh and eighth grade kids also have an opportunity to participate in solo ensemble. So that's what we've been doing.
It's me, cool. So high school choir has been weird because we do not have choir right now. We are starting term three, which has been great for me. I've been getting a lot of organizing done. We have about, I think it's 12 students in each choir and eight of them are in person. So it's going to be a smaller choir, but we're going to do a combined concert again. Hopefully we can do one by the end of the year. I have about six kids currently working with me for solo ensemble, which is awesome. I'm really glad that they took that chance because it's really weird to be, hey, I'm no need for two weeks, let me sing for you? So it's really exciting to kind of have those kids really gung ho about it. So that's kind of what I've been doing. Normally we have our fall concert. We have our magical dinner, which I'm really excited to get to. I know we missed it this year, so next year, let's get it. Taco supper, again, one of our huge fun things that kind of is pop songs. So the kids get excited about it. Large group contest in April. It's, we just have a fun time getting together, having a competition, seeing who's the best. Spring concert and then we have the graduation, which is just chamber. We have our, also our senior song. I'm looking to also put together a senior only choir this year to try and, you know, honor those kids that unfortunately, because of either class scheduling or they graduated early, couldn't participate in choir this year. So I'm going to try and get that going as well. And I don't know about choir festivals, I'm going to hand it over.
So in a normal, non-COVID year, the choir students are able to go to several choir festivals throughout the year. They usually spend the day, or in the case of Dorian, overnight, working with a guest conductor and then performing a culmination concert at the end. So they usually do the UW O'Clare Clearwater Festival in October, Singing in Wisconsin in November, and then the Overnight Luther Vocal Dorian Festival in January. And so then choir students at the high school can also be involved with solo and ensemble, the Spring Musical, Kings Choir, and we have had acapella choir offered as well. Okay, so this year, now that we've moved to trimesters, the high school band has been meeting daily and we have a section of band each of the three trimesters, which has been really nice for encouraging that continuity from day to day instead of having that day off in between. And so we've also had some co-curricular offerings available to high school students as well. So in a normal year, band students would have four to six required 15-minute lessons per trimester. Because we weren't able to start playing indoors until about three weeks ago, they won't have as many this trimester, but I was able to do some outdoor band lessons during trimester one. So in a normal year, you would see us out at the football games in Maple Leaf and Cranfest and homecoming parades, the fall review concert, winter and spring concerts, and then the Veterans Day and Memorial Day programs. And then also performing at some of the local events, including Black River Falls Oktoberfest, Kris Kindle Festival, and then pep band for sports events, as well as handbells and jazz performances around the community. Solo and ensemble is open to all students who are enrolled in high school band. And so we usually take handbells, jazz and other various instrumental ensembles. And then like the choir, we also have the Dorian Band Festival in March, the NBA Honors Band, which travels throughout the state in January. And then last year, we were able to start doing the UW O'Clare Honors Band in November. So like everyone else has mentioned, COVID has really had an impact on band this year. To try and accommodate for the larger group sizes, band rehearsed in the west gym and during trimester one, we only played outside. So we would either use the football field or we would use the parking lot area just to the west of the building. And so we learned a marching routine because we were outside and it still worked. And we were able to keep a pretty normal sense to the fall as long as we were playing outdoors. And Meadowbrook actually contacted us and asked if we would come and play for the residents. So we did a little march-by performance through their little U in front. And so that's one of the video clips that I showed. And then we played and performed this routine for any of the classrooms as we marched around the school and practiced, as well as for the Spirit Week pep assembly. And we actually got one pep band game in for soccer. So it was fun to still be able to have a couple of performances and still be able to be heard. And it was fun because I had community members emailing and saying, hey, it's been great hearing the band practicing out in the mornings. So the drums carry several blocks, so that was kind of fun.
The spring football is right around the mornings, right around the corner.
So as soon, as long as it's not this cold.
Yeah, exactly.
We had one day where a student was like, my trombone won't move. So that was the one day. But we were able to do a fall review concert out on the football field for families and we livestreamed that as well. And then we did prepare for that virtual Veterans Day program in November. During trimester two, we, while we were fully virtual, we were able to do a composition project in conjunction with composer Alex Shapiro, which focused on sound recording and editing with Audacity, which is a computer software, through group collaboration. And so the students had two virtual meetings with the composer and worked within their teams to create different compositions based off of material that they recorded themselves and then put together and looped. And so it was fun to be able to try and do some sound editing and give the kids kind of a background on, normally we get the music on the page and we play it, and talking about how we actually come up with that music and what works well and what is challenging about trying to get music to kind of coordinate like that. So for the past three weeks, we've been able to meet in the west gym with PPE and it's been awesome being able to play indoors again. And the students have really been enjoying that opportunity. And so for trimester three, we plan to continue rehearsing for a spring awards concert that we are hopefully able to coordinate with the choir on and be able to showcase what the students have worked on this year and recognize the seniors who've dedicated their time into the program. And then we also plan to participate in the virtual solo and ensemble festival where students work on music, but then instead of physically going to a school or hosting, we will submit videos. So these are two band recordings that were embedded, so I'm not sure. Oh, there we go. So the one on the left is the band about two weeks ago and we've been working on a song from Pirates of the Caribbean. And then on the right, there is the one from when we went up to the nursing home and performed for them. So each of the students is spaced out. Flutes are a little farther apart because they don't have the same PPE because their sound comes from, or the air is blown across, which is why they have the different style mask. So they have a slightly bigger space. And then everyone else has the overlapping musician masks and bell coverings, like what Mr. Tandy has too. And for this one, this was in about a minute and a half, so don't feel like you have to watch the whole clip if you don't want to. So we are really grateful for the great weather that we ended up having this fall to be able to have as many outdoor rehearsal days as we could. I think there were maybe only three or so that were impacted by rain or that really cold week in October. But it has worked out really well to be able to have rehearsals outdoors.
To be honest, there was one time we had to use one of the videos of them in there, marching to do contact tracing. We're like, go up there, go up there, there they are. We had to try to look who was nearest to that individual, so.
Well, thank you.
There's a little bit left to wrap up. It'll work in the melody over there. She looks up at us disgustingly.
So I think the remaining slides are elective classes that we offer in addition to band and choir. So we're grateful to have the opportunity to provide non-performing music classes too. So students, if they are not interested in performing in front of a large group of people or if there are students who are in band and choir who just want additional music classes to take, we offer music appreciation, which is open to grades nine through 12 and we just provide an overview of different styles of music, different things that go on. I'll come back to this one in just a sec. And then we have music and film, which focuses on music that is present in films, TV shows and video games. And then this year, starting in two weeks, we will be starting music and film two, the sequel, which is going to go a little bit in-depth with more video game music as well as more current movies. So instead of focusing primarily on the history of how music and film combine together, we're going to be going into some more detailed concepts with that. We offer music theater tech, which allows students to become familiar running the equipment in the Lunda Theater and therefore even being able to be hired by the district to run some of those events. And then we've offered some music, or some independent music theory and music composition classes if students are looking to take those upper level classes in either preparation for going into music in college or just really wanting to understand the nuts and bolts behind music. And then every four years, the music department has the opportunity to travel and the past three times... and the past three times, we've gone to New York City. And hopefully, everything going well, we hope to plan to travel next summer, June 2022, which is open to students who are in band and choir that previous year of travel, so the 21-22 school year. In, when we've gone to New York, the band and choir have the opportunity to perform. The past two times, they've performed for the band on the USS Intrepid, and for the choir at St. John the Divine Cathedral. And then the last time, we actually had a chance to do a master class at a college out there as well. And then being able to sightsee throughout the city, so places such as the 9/11 Memorial, the USS Intrepid, Times Square, Ellis Island, Central Park, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, Empire State Building, and others. And then we've been able to see some Broadway shows, including Phantom of the Opera, Aladdin, and The Lion King. So hopefully, June of 2022, we will be able to do that again.
Does anyone have any questions for the music department?
But I did visit Stephanie, and I was impressed with, I said, how in the world do you teach music virtually? And she had these cups, and they were doing all this rhythm stuff. I'm really impressed with adaptations that you've all made. It's really cool.
And that's what I was going to say, that honestly, you guys, everybody has had to make adjustments this year, but fundamentally, to not be able to play your instruments, not to be able to sing, I mean, those were some pretty significant challenges to overcome. And you guys have been so fantastic about what can we do? What could we, you know, we've had a lot of conversations. You guys will ask questions, I meet with public health, come back to these guys, and we just keep working our way through it. And so I so appreciate your creativity and your perseverance, and I love to see the kids be able to pull it together and have some fun doing that. So, good for you, and thank you so very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? We echo what Shelley says. I think we're all very impressed. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, guys. And thanks for coming up tonight, too.
Yes, absolutely.
You've had enough of virtual screens, right?
Okay, the next item on the agenda would be gifts and grants. Do we have any?
And one evening, after we had done the original agenda, and so it is Jen Doll's Arts Theory at the elementary level. She's giving silk flowers and pinecones and cinnamon for elementary art projects. So $250 for the elementary arts program.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, good. Okay, COVID decision-making discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to update you on a few things that we're currently talking about, so that you know that they're on our radar, but no decisions that need to be made tonight. So the first thing that we really started discussing is what virtual programming, what does 21-22 school year look like in terms of virtual programming? And is that an avenue that the district wants to go down? I have no crystal ball to tell it. They were all in the conference room while we were waiting for the music people, just wondering where they're all suddenly coming from. They just got done being served dinner, and so I'm kidding. It's service. Really trying to dig into that, and it might sound like a very simple question, but I'm just going to try to briefly summarize for you. This year, we're able to make the virtual work K8, because we have 30% to 35% of our students. However, if this were a non-COVID year, we would never allow all of those students to remain virtual. When we first started offering virtual classes at the high school, we had to set some criteria. Otherwise, we were spending all this money on virtual classes, and kids were just tinking them. And so the criteria that we established at the high school was, you had to have a B average. You needed to, your attendance, there was all these criteria that needed to be met. This year, none of those criteria need to be met because of the COVID pandemic. If we are going to move forward with virtual programming at all levels, we very much want there to be some criteria, because these students are still ours, and they are extremely disengaged. And so I know that there are some families who are already asking us, boy, this virtual is really working for us. We'd like to continue this. And then there's other families who aren't asking us that, and who are not super-engaged now, who we're quite confident would love to keep moving forward in this way. So it has huge budget ramifications, because we can't fund two schools. We can't fund a virtual school and a face-to-face school. And so that will, there's definitely more to come. I just wanted you to understand that fundamentally, we can't do it like we did this year, because there's too many kids not being successful. And we're going to talk later on another topic about how much teeth is the board interested in putting behind some of these things. We've always taken a very strong stance on wanting to provide as many opportunities as families want, and that we can financially and programmatically support. And we really don't, we want to provide whatever services the families ask for. At some point, we're going to have to have a conversation and some agreement as to how uncomfortable we're willing to make some people, because they're not meeting expectations. So this family would like to stay virtual, but the kid logs on once a week. Are we okay with that? Because leadership-wise, I don't think we're okay with that. But does that mean that family's not going to get angry and choose to leave our district? That might happen. We're going to have to collectively have some conversation as to what are our expectations? And are we willing to tolerate how much less than meeting those expectations before we draw a hard line? And it sounds harsh to say, but this year has been all about, everybody do the very best that you can, right? Families, give us the best that you can. We're giving you the best that we can, and it's going to be okay. But when we start projecting forward to next September, it can't roll like this for that much longer. And so just wanted to throw that out there, that we're going to have to have some of those conversations. As far as other COVID decisions that we're talking about, the high school is engaging with the juniors officers and the senior officers to talk about what prom might possibly look like this year. What we are currently talking about is that outdoors would be way more positive on our end, but we're really curious what, historically, prom's been very student-driven, and so we're trying to empower the students to still have those conversations, except we set the parameters as to what mitigation strategies. And so Chris is meeting with the prom coordinator, who is Nikki Sackmaster, and then they're going to meet with each of the class officers to see if we need to have two separate ones, and they can agree to go together, all of those pieces, and so they're going to work their way through that. But we talked to public health, and they're okay with that, would prefer outdoors. And then, easy, we heard from the music department, they would love to put together some kind of a spring performance. We've talked about, if we want a whole music department performance, then outdoors would probably be best. If they're interested in doing like middle school choirs first, and then emptying the theater, and then the next group come in, and then empty the theater, that would be possible. But if they're interested in a more, you know, whole program, then it would be best done outdoors. And so they, as I said to them, they have been so fantastic about all of the cards they've been dealt this year. And I, I mean, ukuleles, seriously, what if their middle school kid learns how to play ukulele? I just love that creativity. I love it. So, anyway, those were just some of the COVID things that we are currently talking about, and wanted you to know that they are on our radar.
Laura, do you know more about when staff will be able to start getting vaccines?
No, we did adhere to, over the weekend, that our special education staff that got the first dose are scheduled to get the second dose this week, so that's great. So we'll have about 60 people that have both of their dosages in. We originally, you probably saw on the news or wherever, that 1B, which is where K-12 Education sits, is eligible as of March 1st. Our county has said that they have been woefully under. Under supplied, yep. And so they're not making any guarantees that it will happen. To be honest, depends on the day you talk to them. It could be April, it could be later in March, not sure. But we're not holding our breath for March 1st. But I'm glad that those that started the process are going to get to get that second dose before, you know, too much time has passed, and then we're back to square one, so that's good. Any other COVID decision-making topics you'd like to discuss? All right.
Okay. And we have some employment recommendations, and one of the retirees are here.
That's right. We've got to offer some congratulations to Mr. Tom Chambers back there. I don't know about you guys, but I thought his letter was just thinking adorable. I absolutely loved it. I loved it. And it did not surprise me in any way, shape, or form. So we are hoping to do some kind of an end-of-year celebration for our retirees. Last year, we tried it virtually, and it was on like the stormiest night of the 21, so it didn't end up happening, and I was so frustrated. I'm really hopeful that we get something outside this spring, where we can really truly celebrate the years of service. So we're so, so, so appreciative of Mr. Chambers. More to come on that for sure. And also Mr. Hensel retiring from the Transportation Department after so long, and yeah, lots, lots going on.
Okay, any questions on those? Is there a motion to approve? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Stephanie will be talking about achievement gap?
Actually, Laura and Melanie are going to be talking about achievement gap. So this is that annual report that needs to go to DPI. It is used to be sage, and now it is achievement gap reduction. And so this is the same data that we collect and measure anyway. They just are required to put it into a report form for the board annually. So, take it away, Melanie.
Is our microphone all set up and ready?
It should be, yep.
So DPI sends us this lovely form that is super hard to read, and so we made it into a more visual format for you guys to proceed through and learn about what we're doing and our goals for the school. So we talked about Forest Street first. Overall, the strategies that we're using for our AGR goals, which if you don't know, AGR stands for Achievement Gap Reduction. At Forest Street, the interventions, if you will, that we're going to use are instructional coaching, and it just so happens that class sizes are under 18 in first grade. That's something that we don't necessarily intentionally apply as an intervention. It just, when it happens to work, we knock it off as an intervention, and it worked for first grade this year. So our two coaches at Forest Street are Kirsten Meyer and Tara Prestwood. If you might go to the next slide. So our math pool is that Forest Street will increase the percentage of students that are at or above grade level by 20 percentage points, as measured by the IREDDI Diagnostic Math from the fall of 2020 to the spring of 2021. And so at the beginning of the year, I don't expect you to read that, those small things here. That green means that those are honor above grade level. The yellow means that they are below grade level. And because it's kindergarten, there's not a below grade level, and so you'll.
One grade level below, there's not a two-grade level.
There's not a two-grade level.
We don't go back to birth and figure out.
And that gray area means that those are students that are not tested. I know that first one looks like a big chunk, but it's only four kids. Oh, no, I lied, 16 kids. And the second one, we got it down to four. And those are, some reasons for that are some students that were virtual that just did not get to it, and some students that have moved during that testing period. So we're starting out with, at the fall, 20% of our kids were on or above grade level. At mid-year, which we just wrapped up, is at 41. And by the spring, our goal is to be at 40, and if you can tell, we met our goal. So doesn't mean we're stopping, that we're for sure going on. And I just want to share a little celebration. I did some time studies of our data, as well as I was going through this. This time last year, we had moved kinders from 12% to 32%. So we actually started off stronger this year, and made just a tad more growth, too. So I think that's a celebration, the time of COVID.
Quick question on the, on the tests they're taking here. So is this, they took it in the fall, is the mid-year more difficult? Okay, so the bar is moving as they went.
And so that spring one is not a given, because the bar also moves by the grade. Yep, absolutely.
That was my question. Thank you.
So, and then we've got a second goal in math. This is a new goal for us. We wanted not only an achievement goal, but also a growth goal. And this means that not only do we want to have our students hit a certain bar, but also all of our students to grow a specified amount. And so this is the first time that we're able to see this data, because it takes two assessments to determine how much growth, a student's level of growth. This chart shows that we have 21% of our students meeting 80% or more of their growth goal. So the IREDDI assessment system establishes a growth goal for each student. And this bar graph there shows that, in the furthest right, that means that 16% of our students have 100% met their growth goal for the year. That 5% are in that 80 to 99, meeting their growth goal. 11 are in that 60 to 79 percentage, 17 in 40 to 59, 13 in 20 to 39, and then 38 are less than 19%. By spring, we want to have 50% of our students on the other side of that orange bar to the right. So.
And just to clarify that, that growth goal is not the same for every student. It matters your age and what your score is. So clearly, students who score below grade level in the fall have a larger growth goal than students who score above grade level.
So same goal for first grade for math. So you can see here, we started in the fall with 13% of our students on or above grade level, and at the mid-year, we have up to 19% now. And another celebration on this one, because we did IREDDI last year, is that we had moved from 3% to 13%. So we're starting off with more kiddos on grade level this year.
Melanie's going to get you alliterated in all these charts. Laura's going to be able to click right through them.
So same, same logic for this goal, too. This is first grade. So again, just a reminder that this is the first time that we're seeing this data, which is why you have a mid-year and a spring. The chart shows that we have 18% of our first grade students meeting 80% or more of their growth goal. And by spring, we're shooting for at least 50% of our students meeting 80% or more of their growth goals. So same AGR interventions for reading, that we have instructional coaching and class sizes under 18 in first grade. Our goal for reading, which we only have one goal in reading, is that at least 55% of our students will meet the assessment criteria to be placed on or above grade level in the phoneme segmentation fluency component of the DIBS system. And I've got some information for you, because I realize that's a lot of educational jargon that some of you might not be familiar with. And so at Forest Street, we're using a new assessment that assesses these foundational skills called DIBBS. DIBBS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. DIBBS is a nationally norm assessment. In order to understand why we chose this goal, I want to offer the following insight into phonemic awareness, which that PSF, that phoneme segmentation fluency, essentially is a sub-skill of. So phonemic awareness is the ability to hear and manipulate sounds and spoken words, and the understanding that spoken words and syllables are made up of sequences of speech sounds. It's essential to learning to read in an alphabetic writing system, because letters represent sounds or phonemes. Without phonemic awareness, phonics makes little sense. We just adopted our CTLA skills that phonics piece last year. Fundamental, the phonemic awareness is fundamental to mapping speech to print. If a child cannot hear that man and moon begin with the same sound, or cannot blend the sound, or a hm, into the word run, he or she may have great difficulty connecting sounds with their own symbols or blending sounds to make a word. And most importantly, why we chose this particular goal is that this is a strong predictor of children who experience early reading success. So at Forest Street, I want to talk about some of the things that we're doing with these goals. We're really diving into phonics teaching and intervention. Our teachers are slowly but surely being trained on Orton Gillingham. The Orton Gillingham approach is a direct, explicit, multi-sensory, structured, sequential, diagnostic, and prescriptive way to teach literacy when reading, writing, and spelling. That does not come easy to individuals, such as those with dyslexia. It's most properly understood in practice as an approach, and not a method, a program, or a system. And so what that means is that you might see practices that the teachers will use in addition to their core curriculum. So they might bring in things to have the students practice letters in stand, so that there's that multi-sensory approach to learning. This is also in conjunction with training that we've already had in CTLA and visual phonics. And visual phonics is a kind of sign language that teaches movements with the sounds. As of recently, our teachers are also administering short probes to all students who are not yet at benchmark for this goal, once in every two-week period. And what's really exciting about this is our instructional aid that we hired this year gathers this data into our DIBS system, and it produces some really awesome reports. And the reports are then turned back to the teachers to evaluate and look over how their students are progressing each, every other week. And then they make a plan on how they're going to intervene with those students. As a tier-one intervention, we're using Hegarty, which is just some, phonics works as well, but it's really short. It's like 10 to 15 minutes of structured lessons for our teachers. And that works on letter and sound recognition and language awareness. So our kindergarten reading data, so that's all the stuff we're doing, but this is our goal. We want to be at 55% by spring. At the fall, we are at 26%. Winter, we went down, dipped a little bit, but again, this is a moving target. But we are really digging in hard right now on what we're doing and how we're intervening. And we dipped down to eighteen percent. And then we're, like I said, we're hoping to get back up to fifty-five. My book to first grade. So, at the beginning of the school year, twenty-two percent of our students were honor above grade level. And at the end of this most recent cycle, twenty-five percent were honor above grade level according to DIBS data. I just wanted to note that we did not do a beginning of the year iReady in reading because we administered the DIBS assessment. We did administer reading, however, at mid-year. We're gonna do it again at the end of the year, just to kind of corroborate the data that we're seeing from DIBS. Our data is not significantly different. Both grade levels are where they were at with iReady last year. We know we've got some work to do in this area, but we're really excited and focused in doing some really great things to dig in and move our students along. We're excited because this would be the first school year that we're using CTLA and have some really strong focused practices and interventions that will, we're hoping, help our kids grow. Nothing more to say.
Melanie, I have a question. When I was looking through all the DIBS data, with the kindergarten one, that was the only one that went down. Is there any more insight in why that one went down and all the other grade levels didn't increase?
Our teams are really digging into that. We're looking at attendance data of those kids that dipped down. We're looking at, were they virtual, were they face-to-face? Did they flip back and forth? We have a couple situations. I already know that they've switched three times this year. And every time a kid switches, they lose at least a day of instruction. Just now, we're getting to the point where we are, since we shaved off an hour of the day and we're implementing a new curriculum, those two kind of buckheads against each other that we don't have enough time to intervene. And so, we have carved out time to intervene. And so, now we've got that, that our teachers can actually react to the data that's in front of them, so.
I also wonder if it has something to do with masks because kids can't see. And they can't hear, the same thing. Especially at that young age, you know?
It's also our first year administering it. So, we're learning, the first round, Nicole Sullivan and Kirsten Meyer administered all of these assessments to all of our students. Now, the second round, our teachers are doing it. And so, I think that some of that data could be in how we're administering it as well. I don't wanna dismiss it off to that, though, because they're pretty easy, straightforward tasks. It's scripted and read it, and the kids have to give you the answer, like letter N E, they just have to rattle off the letter, piece of letters, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Forest Street?
So, I'm Red Creek. Our second and third graders are the two levels that qualify for the AGR performance grant. And so, our two strategies are the same as Forest Street this year. Even in our virtual classes, we are staying under that eighteen level. And then we also have instructional coaching. Vicki Kramer is wearing lots of big hats this year. So, she has moved, she's trying to move into her district reading specialist position, but she also is still supporting us at Red Creek. Kristy Rauish, if you remember, was hired to be our instructional coach this year. And so, it's really hard for her to sit on our hands and just be a virtual fifth-grade teacher. So, she's also supporting us a great deal in these data conversations and trying to even get into the classrooms a little bit, especially with some of our newer teachers, so. So... So, our reading and math goals, we use the iReady diagnostic assessment, the same as what Melanie talked about at Forest Street. But that is our only assessment that we're basing our two school goals on. But I also want you to know that we did do the DIBS assessment as well to all of our students. We just didn't create a building goal around that yet. But possibly, we've talked about using that because you can really dig in deeper to the root cause for different kids. iReady is more of a overall view of the reading and reading ability, so. So, ours is the same. We wanted to shift that percentage of students that are at or above by twenty percentage points. And so, you can see in the fall with our second graders, we started at thirteen percent. And at mid-year now in the winter, we grew to twenty-five percent of our students are at or above. And by spring, we hope to get to thirty-three percent. Does anybody have any questions about this goal? Because we're, we're gonna go back, it's gonna be the same for reading and math. And I also included our fourth and fifth graders and our overall school numbers, just so you can see our whole building. And so, the second goal is the same as Melanie explained it. We would like fifty percent of our students will show adequate progress towards their annual typical growth goal as measured by that iReady diagnostic from fall to spring. So, in the winter, for our second grade readers, we were at thirty-two percent, making that adequate progress. And in the spring, we're hoping for that fifty percent, just as Melanie said, for Forest Street. So, now we'll switch to second grade math. So, again, this goal is increasing the number of students that are at or above by that twenty percentage point. So, we started with seven percent in the fall. And at mid-year now, we have twenty-one percent. And our overall goal is to get up to the twenty-seven percent. And then the second goal, the growth goal. So, another way to look at these two is that first goal is kind of like, that's the information that lands on our school report card, that overall at or above. The growth goal is interesting to dive in because you can look at a student on a more individual basis. Many times, we dig into those students that are below grade level. And, you know, that's one piece, but are they growing? Are we shifting them, no matter where they're at? And so, if they're below grade level and they're not moving, then we need to respond to that. But sometimes, you know, for whatever reason, they just have a slower start. So, that growth is a good indicator. Are they making progress? Are they, over time, going to catch up to their peers? A lot of times, that doesn't happen in one year. But over the course of a couple of years, the growth information really helps us with that piece.
And just to be clear, that growth is also, so even a student who tests above grade level in the fall is still expected to grow. I just wanna be very clear that we are not just measuring the students below, that all kids, and that is also on the state report card, that there's the closing, the growth goal as well. And so, all students, regardless of how high they score, are expected to grow and would be in that gap.
Because we have dug into that, too, those higher-level kids. You know, if you remember the star, we were always trying to go from green to dark green and shifting those. And so, thank you for that. So, our goal is fifty percent, too, that will make that adequate growth by the end of the school year. Third grade, we started off with thirty-one percent of our kids at or above in the fall. And at winter now, we're at forty-nine percent. And so, their goal is fifty-one, so they're well on track with that.
That was the same group that was last year, was high in second grade.
Yes, yes. And those students had this CTLA program that Melanie mentioned. We don't have both pieces, but they did use that and they continued some of that CTLA work into when we did our closure as well. And so, I don't know, you hope that this is that group that really is showing the impact of that program. And then their growth, thirty-two percent are making that adequate progress. And so, they're well on their way to that goal of fifty percent by spring. Third grade math, in the fall, we had thirteen percent that came in at or above. And at winter, we're at up to twenty-six percent. And so, the overall goal by spring is to get to that thirty-three percent. And the growth this winter, we're definitely different pictured here and definitely taking a look, harder look at this. But in the winter, we had seventeen percent of our third graders in math, making that adequate progress. And so, we've got, and a long ways to go to hit that fifty percentile, or fifty percent, making that adequate growth. And so, I'll talk a little bit about our strategies that we're talking about in house at the end, too. Fourth graders, we had twenty-one percent coming in at or above. And at winter, we're at twenty-five percent at or above. So, the goal by the end, forty-one percent. Sorry, no, no. I know, so I'm sorry. Please stop me and question if, you know, anything comes to mind because these slides are very repetitive. So, this one again is that fifty percent will make that adequate growth. And so, that's pretty exciting, that forty-two percent have already met one hundred percent. And so, the other thing that iReady offers is not only a typical growth goal, but a stretched growth goal. So, that's, there's a really nice parent report, I should have put a glimpse of that in here, that kind of shows you those two different bands so that the, you know, the parents can see that, okay, we met our typical growth goal, but how much further do we have to go to get to that stretch? Fourth grade math, goal one, at or above. So, fourteen percent at the beginning of the year, and we're up to twenty-six percent at or above, with the goal being thirty-four. And at winter now, we have twenty-four percent of our kids making that adequate growth. Fifth grade reading, they came in at nineteen percent at or above. And by winter, they were at twenty-three percent, the goal at thirty-nine. It's exciting looking at those pie graphs, too, not only to look at that at or above, but when the red is decreasing as well. Kind of decreasing faster, which is a good thing. And so, the fifth grade reading growth, forty-three percent have a hundred percent met it. So, then, you know, of course, our charts look similar to Melanie's where you go all the way to the bottom and that thirty-two percent, and that's troubling. You know, you think about, we know as a district, we're somewhat disproportionate with our special education population. Some of this, I, you know, have to attribute to some of our virtual learners. We have what's called a borderless classroom. And so, basically, a teacher at school can see what's on all their little screens at home. So, they use that to shut off YouTube when they're supposed to be here in class. But one thing they found with the iReady is they saw a few kids just, you know, clicking through. And so, at school, if they were there, they would just have them stop, maybe take a break, talk to them a little bit and try to get back in. Or just try another day if the day really wasn't going well. And they couldn't do that. They couldn't get, using that program. So, I don't know if that borderless classroom connected with the iReady assessment wasn't working like some of the other windows that they're able to close out for students. So, I don't know. We also had a number of students shifting back and forth. So, it'll be interesting now to dig in harder and just look at those thirty-two percent and see what shifts we can make with them. So, then if we go to goal, first goal for fifth grade math, seventeen percent were at or above. And by winter, twenty-five percent were at or above, with the goal being thirty-seven. So, then I wanted you to, oh, sorry, growth, growth with...
You're right.
Yeah, you were correct, I was jumping ahead. I'm sorry. So, in math, we had twenty-nine percent of our fifth graders in math, making that adequate progress, with our goal being fifty. Well, that's the breakdown of grade by grade. Then I wanted you to see overall Red Creek. And for some reason, I can't get those pies to show us the whole school. So, now you get pyramids, which is fine, shows the same information. And so, again, our overall goal is to shift the at or above grade level by twenty percentage points. So, in the fall, as a school, in reading, we had twenty-one percent of our students at or above. In winter, we climbed to thirty-one percent of our students. And again, it's nice to see that red dipping as well. And our goal by spring is to be at forty-one percent as a school. In our growth goal for reading, in the winter now, we've got forty percent of our school making that adequate progress. And with our overall goal to land on fifty. In math, we started with thirteen percent at or above grade level. And now, at the winter screen, we are at twenty-five percent, their goal being thirty-three. And then, last but not least, our math growth goal. At winter, we had twenty-six percent making that adequate progress, with our goal to be at fifty percent. Melanie talked about strategies that are building, are using, and just recently trying to dig into that tier-one. Red Creek is a little bit behind that, but we had our initial meeting with our building leadership team today. And we'll be rolling out on Friday, we have a professional development day, what process we're gonna use at Red Creek to see. You know, it's hard because we did lose an hour of school. So, our target time was one of the first things that we put aside. But our data is showing that the kids are meeting us now. And so, we just wanted to be really strategic, even with a shortened day, what time can we offer? And that's hard because teachers are settled into their schedule and there's not a lot of wiggle room. And so, they're making some tough decisions about where do you find those little pockets of time to dig in. To try to make that process a little easier, we're looking at using, in reading, to support our students, all students. That was another piece that Vicki Kramer was helping our leadership team today, understand that tier-one is for all kids. And it should be a part of that core in your classroom. It's not a over and above intervention like we talk about with our tier-two and tier-three. And so, we're using the Amplify, which is connected to our CTLA program. It's a quick online intervention that we can level the kids and mark exactly the the areas that they need more supported. And then for our fourth and fifth graders, we're gonna use Read Naturally Live. Both of these are nationally recognized programs. And so, we're hoping that, you know, the teachers not having to do all that extra planning will be helpful. And yet, the kids hopefully will make some big impact yet this school year. In math, we're gonna look at eSparks for the same, it's a computerized program. And it monitors the students, so it's gonna take some of the teacher work off their plates when they're already trying to manage, you know, a shortened schedule. And they have new reading program. So, we have Ready Gen in grades two through five, but second grade is still keeping that CTLA piece in there as well. And we've also upgraded our math expressions. And so, there was a little shift, not as big of a curriculum shift, but still new, new information for them to be sharing out with their kids.
Does anyone have any questions for them about what you just learned?
I have a lot. First of all, I'm just curious, are you able to take your at or above grade level numbers and also your growth goal numbers and separate out the kids who are learning at school versus virtually so we can see the impact that those two different learning environments are having on those, those numbers?
Yes. We might have to do some hand calculating. The only place that I wonder...
It would be hand calculation, which is certainly doable. And that's what they were both saying, that they're digging in a little bit deeper, right?
Yeah, you know, I think it's important for parents, when they're making that decision to see
Absolutely.
the statistical impacts that that's having on their kids.
The challenge is, quite honestly, that there are some kids who are absolutely thriving in that virtual environment.
Sure.
And those are the parents that are gonna be asking for that research and that information. And so, likely, their kids would be successful still being at home. It's the ones that are at home who don't have that additional support that won't ask that important question to know which one would be the best choice for their child, so, yeah.
And then, the other question I have... And then, um, the other question I have, and I apologize if I am confusing information or asking this in a unclear way. So when we have the tier one, two, and three, tier one is supposed to meet the needs of eighty percent of students, correct? Okay, so how does that correlate that need to meet the needs of eighty percent to our at or above grade level percentages that we're trying to achieve by the end, you know, by the spring testing?
And so if you recall, um, we used to do the STAR test, and you saw those charts forever, forever, forever. And then when we got our Wisconsin Forward test, there would be a huge, um, difference between the two. STAR would have us thinking that we're making these huge strides, and then we would look at our forward exam, and it would be a very, very different story that I was telling. So the iReady is much more rigorous and more closely aligned to the state testing. And so it looks like our overall percentages have dropped, but to be honest, they are in alignment with our Wisconsin Forward. It's not great news, but at least it's an honest picture throughout the year as opposed to getting conflicting data points. So, um, when we say that our goal is for, um, eighty to eighty-five percent of the kids to get their needs met in that tier one, that's not a gap that we're going to close immediately, and that's something that we have to keep building on. The fact that you heard from Melanie, and Laura didn't point it out specifically, the fact that we had some grade levels starting this fall higher than they ended last spring, I don't know if you guys recall how many years we talked about the summer slide, but the fact that we're starting to combat that at some grade levels is huge. The amount of foundational literacy skills conversations being had in the district over the last year as opposed to, um, too many teachers choosing their own adventure with the literacy collaborative. I, I mean, honestly, the, the prescriptive chronics, the prescriptive, all of that stuff, we just feel like there's so many foundational skills that our kids are missing. The fact that we're starting at our youngest levels, picking up higher than we left off the previous year, and remember, the previous year ended in March, and we're still starting off higher than that, I think is a, a great step in the right direction. Stephanie's going to talk to you a little bit later about what does this mean for our kids, middle school and high school, who went through missing those foundational skills as well. And for years, we would say that once, um, just not take too much time, but the iReady gives you kind of composite reading skill, the dibbles is drilled down, this is the task, right? And so for years, once a kid got to middle school and high school, it would be really difficult to identify which, so they're not a good reader, but which piece is their challenge and what can I do about it? Like how, I'm an English nine teacher, I don't, I know English, but I don't know how to teach reading, especially if it's a skill they should have learned in second grade. We've come a long way in that discussion, as has the world of education. So Vicki Kramer leading that charge is just doing some fantastic work in that. And again, not to steal her thunder, but Stephanie's got an awful lot to talk about as to what we, that possibly could mean for filling those gaps moving forward. Ideally, eighty to eighty-five percent of our students would be in that green. However, um, we're not there, and our state report card tells us we're not there. And I would say over half the districts in the state aren't there yet, but that is the goal, that's the aspiration. If we get to, um, twenty percent from where we are now, and we don't drop all that twenty percent over next fall, then imagine that picture moving forward, right? Because I remember our growth, for years, we talked about our STAR data, our growth was above the state average, and our achievement never caught up because each, we build, build, build all school year, and then summer would come and we were lower. That implies to me that our teachers are doing a great job giving them the skills for now, but there was foundational pieces that they were still missing, that they would go away for summer, and it was like a brand new ballgame each time they came back, so. Ideally, absolutely, along, um, that's, that's a, that's the end goal, not the short-term wins along the way, I guess. But very good question. Any more questions or comments?
I'm, I'm just wondering, yes, this is, um, I mean, so we're looking at less than half of the students being at or above grade level by the end of the year.
Which is not new information for us, just to be clear.
Right, right, so I'm just wondering if that's, if that's particularly this year, I mean, has it been every year?
As we heard, this is higher than we've been in past years. So honest to goodness, we've had so many conversations, and you're, we're leading right into the next two discussion points, which is great. COVID has not been, um, a positive by any stretch in the academic world, but it has not created gaps for us. It has exacerbated gaps in some areas, but it has not created problems that we have not been battling for many years. And so when we talk about what are we going to do about the challenges that COVID has created or our, our current, uh, reality, it's not going to be, we're going to do this because COVID happened, we're going to do this because we've had these longstanding gaps, and we're finally starting to make some ground, and so we need to do more of that. And so we really, none of our data is telling us that COVID has created problems. It has exacerbated the gaps.
And Amy, I can just add that, yes, that's tough to say only half of our kids are going to make that. That's tough for the teachers to, you know, figure out what that number's going to be. But we also have to have achievable goals, you know, we want them aggressive, but reasonably, reasonable and achievable. Um, in the past, we've said a hundred percent of our kids, and, you know, we just never, never hit that, those goals. And so trying to find a balance where it is an aggressive goal, but reasonable, so.
And to be able to celebrate some success along the way.
Yeah, hopefully we just keep bringing you higher and higher goals in the coming years.
Any more questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the achievement gap reduction report?
And the actual report is that painful piece of paper that she showed you.
With all the other information, yes.
And we appreciate the pictorial view that is opposed to just that documents as well.
Yes, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the report?
Oh, no.
Brad, okay, and who seconded it? Amy, all in favor, say aye.
I didn't say a thing.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
No, I was scratching my.
Oh, okay, Ann. Okay, Brad and Ann, okay, got it, okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, okay. Great, graded advancement policy.
Well, that's why you got to do whispers.
We, we don't ask, we disappoint you.
Um, so the reason that I'm giving you this policy, this is not, I'm not recommending any changes to the current policy, but I wanted to make you aware of what this policy says and, um, how it is written and what the ramifications of this could be. So as we've talked about a lot tonight, um, this is a problem that COVID has definitely negatively impacted. And so we've talked for a lot, administratively, we've talked a lot this year, how many kids are we really talking about? How many kids are so completely disengaged that we should be having real conversations about whether they should advance to the next grade level or not? And so I wanted you to have this policy so you can see what is supposed to weigh into it, what, um, those decision-making points are. And, and then we had a lot of talk about is retention supported by research in any way, shape, or form? And up until what grade, what grade levels? And, um, how do we feel about that locally, whether we think that's the right answer or not? Um, for students who have not engaged at all this year, perhaps it's a different answer. If a kid has come each day and is not achieving more of the same, isn't necessarily going to change the story either. And so it would have to be something different. To summarize, um, the, it was a K eighth conversation, so it was Melanie, Laura, Brandon, Dan, and I, and we just looked at what are the numbers? What it boils down to is there was about ten to twelve kids at Forest Street, ten to twelve at Red Creek, and about twenty-five at the middle school that have missed thirty or more days of school this school year. And we're at the halfway point, just to be clear. So thirty or more days, and we're at the halfway point of the school year. Some have missed a lot more than that, but that was kind of the line that we drew in the sand just to look at this. So we created a protocol that we were going to try to have some conversations with these families that just say, here is, here's, here's the long and short of it, your child's current achievement is here, their attendance is here, here's where they're expected to be, um, just kind of laying it all out very, very, very matter-of-fact to them. And we had the conversation that the teachers have been reaching out to these families all year. They have talked and talked and talked, the social worker has probably been to most of these houses, um, and the principals have certainly reached out to them. We're trying to think of a way that we get kind of up the ante a little bit so that they recognize we're serious, this is a big deal. And so they're working on filling in the spreadsheets of all the additional, we want all the background information on those students, and then we're going to schedule some times that it is, I'm going to sit in on all those discussions and just talk to the families about this. What we would like to do is be able to really put some teeth behind it that either you've still got more than a trimester left, fix it, like make your child come either virtually or physically, make, fix it for right now, and show us good faith that you recognize the problem and we're ready to move forward. We've talked about, do we make a mandatory summer school? And what does the board think about that? Um, because mandatory means come, or you're back in the same grade level again. Um, do we talk to them about, um, something else during the school year? Are they required to come Saturdays? Are they required to come to some after-school? Are they, what, what kind of teeth is the board interested in holding people to when it comes to something like this? I will share my personal opinion on retention. Research does not strongly support retention any level beyond very, very, very young kids. So Forest Street, I could maybe get behind that. Retaining a middle school student is, there's no research that says that's a good idea. The only thing I would consider is maybe they have not attended at all this year, so it would be truly a new experience for them the next year, I don't know. This rolls into that same conversation about are we going to force all kids to come physically back to school next year? Or is the board going to feel compelled to still offer some virtual possibilities because the pandemic isn't going to be gone, because some families like it, because like, I guess this is us trying to ask you guys, what is your appetite for accountability for students and families? Because we don't want to go too far down this path, and then somebody comes to you and is disappointed or frustrated or, um, angry because we said their child was three years behind grade level, and we weren't, aren't going to let them take TACAD because they're going to sit here for more literacy because they're three grade levels behind. And, and this is not something I need a response from, this is a conversation that I really think the more we try to hold people accountable for the achievement, we're going to all have to be on the same page. Because we don't want to plant the plague for them to come to you and you pluck that plague out because then we look silly. And we also don't want to be too soft when you're ready to plant a firm plague. And so I just wanted to start planting those seeds and ask if you have immediate thoughts or questions? It all rolls together, and what are we doing with these forty-some kids who missed more than thirty days this school year? How are we going to hold them accountable? What does it look like when a kid is three, four grade levels below as far as their choices for selecting classes? Do they get to pick, or do we start to be, uh, directive about it? Um, what about the virtual education? Should we divide our resources because some families want us to, even though we think we're more effective when they come face to face? Do you have initial, I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, this is going to be an ongoing conversation. I just want to prompt your thinking a little bit because it's going to come to you. Let's be honest, if I make them angry, they're going to come to you, so.
Where's the policy of truancy of the non-COVID year? How that does not affect retention at all?
Um, it doesn't affect retention, um, we have, it, it could, that certainly is a factor. And so when we look at this policy for this year, we've talked about engagement, we haven't necessarily talked about achievement, we've just been talking about it in terms of engagement. The next step for the teams that were looking at those students was, so these kids have missed thirty or more days, how many of them are at or above grade level? Do we not worry as much about them this year because of COVID? Or do we just dig into those that are below grade level this year? So there is a process to file truancy on a family, I would say that our county really doesn't have a great structure in place. Um, last school year, we were, I, I facilitated, I think, like eight different meetings. We were really starting to gain some traction with the neighboring two districts and, um, county and city, and Judge Becker was here, we really started to gain some traction. And then COVID hit, and nobody came to those conversations. Because this year, it doesn't make sense to file truancy on somebody, but what does make sense? And at what point do we start holding it accountable?
And then also lastly, what, the, the studies have shown the retention is not effective. Do you have any sort of, something like that?
Do I have any one?
Sorry, so.
Oh, I can certainly, I can certainly.
I was just curious if you could look at it, if I could look at it.
Oh, yeah.
On the curiosity.
I, I'm assuming you're, you're just seeing increased high school drops, Shelley, is that without research?
Uh, yeah, that they, um, yes, you bring a kid back for the next year, and they do the exact same thing. Well, now what? You know, I didn't do anything last year, and so you brought me back, and we kind of teased when this became state law for a while, there was that no social promotion, and we said we're going to have to build a parking lot onto the middle school because we're going to have eighth graders driving because they're, you know, if they don't change their behavior, we're just going to say, no, you can't, until, you know, kids are stubborn, and we'll dig in, so.
So I, I think you said the line was fourth grade, is that where the research says anything?
Uh, younger than that would be, and I, and I will share some studies because you, of course, you can find something that supports anything. But the research, like a kindergarten, first grader, um, the, the long-term affects the, the eventual dropout rate, and, uh, you hold a child back, uh, that disengagement just continues and continues. The number of kids who are held back that go to alt-ed and then, you know, six-year graduation route or something like that is pretty strong.
So of those, you said roughly forty-ish students?
Yep.
Um, is that all of what you would consider high risk, or?
So what we did was, again, we drew that line at thirty or more absences so far this year. And so we, that thirty number, Melanie was the one that first drew it, it was kind of a natural break in the number she was looking at. So there was this pool of students that had been gone and thirty, and then it was kind of a smattering, and so that's where that line was drawn. Certainly truancy, pure truancy is five or more days in a semester. And so these kids are well past truancy by this point.
So how many of those forty-ish students, and I, I, obviously I'm asking for a gut number at this point, are like fourth grade or less?
So there was eleven students at Forest Street, so that would be kindergarten or first grade. And then Red Creek had about eleven, and they do second, third, fourth, fifth. So I don't know what number, so if the maximum would be twenty-two that were younger than fourth grade, be the maximum number. And the middle school had the largest number out of them.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-seven, thank you for that.
Are a lot of these kids in the same families?
We tried, that's what they're, part of their next steps is, so we identified a criteria, they're supposed to be filling in that spreadsheet so we can start pulling them by family because that would be fantastic if we could work smarter and not harder, absolutely. So a, again, I, I want you to ask questions, I want you to start thinking about it. Um, we're going to have to start building some systems, and we're going to need some joint, some collective commitments as to how aggressively we're going to hold people accountable.
This is a part of me, and it's like, you can't help but ask yourself, how many of these families are just allowing this because COVID is an excuse for them to do it?
Absolutely, that could be, for some of them, it could be. I will tell you that there are some who, um, the parents have flat out said, I'm just, um, not exaggerating, um, a family that they have grandpa, grandpa living there, had grandma, grandpa living there. One of the grandparents passed away because of COVID, and that family said, I'm not sending my kids, we don't have Wi-Fi, I'm not sending my kids. I'm not going to argue with that this year, I'm really not. And so, but that's one family scenario, certainly not trying to pretend that's the majority of them. If everybody has their own story, is really what it boils down to. And so you try to be as accommodating as you can to that story, but non-COVID year, where's our line going to be, and, and how much discomfort are we going to be willing to tolerate in order to, um, move them forward?
Well, and I think when, as we think about this, we have to consider, this might be the way things are with COVID forever. I mean, this might not go away or really get significantly better, we don't know, you know?
I certainly don't have that push the wall, right?
So, I mean, that's something to just keep in the back of our minds, that we're considering.
You're making me sad, but yes, that doesn't happen.
I mean, we just, it's so new, we just don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I don't need any action tonight, I want you to start thinking about this. And as we go through a lot of our conversations, how hard are we willing to plant our plague to get away from numbers that look like that presentation that we just saw?
Do you want us to email the docs to you?
Well, we have a board development session, we'll likely have more time, we just have a lot of larger reports. And I dumped a lot on you, and Stephanie's going to add more to it. So maybe we could, uh, bring this around when we have that board development session, that work, perfect.
Well, we've always had, uh, for student success, we meet the families and the kids where they're at and kind of develop what they need. And the disengagement is a whole nother thing. I mean, if, if we're trying to provide what they need and they're not engaging with us, that, that is a, an issue with, with the kids and the families, so.
And I get concerned that March, and then it goes this entire year, holy cow, now you're creating some ingredients as well because however old that child is, they've been given a lot of opportunity.
I ran through the whole, all of that, and the rules and all of that, and it seems like it's pretty clearly laid out in there how the board has in the past, they did in two thousand seventeen, I believe, wanted that managed. Um, and I guess what, what we're looking at is whether or not we want to enforce that in that.
One hundred percent, what level of discomfort are we willing to collectively tolerate? Because it will get uncomfortable, yes. Okay.
One, one more question, number, um, a, a year ago, which of course seems like a long time ago, what, I mean, what do you think this number was a year ago?
Uh, thirty or more absences, oh my gosh, help me out, folks.
They're all shaking their heads.
Real, because we would have had them in truancy court by now, we, we would have had, I think we would have, like, we would have had a social worker attached to them from the county, we would have been far more aggressive.
So we're, we're many orders of magnitude over.
Absolutely, and so that's why the engagement piece is far different than it has been in previous years, yeah. And I won't say that truancy court fixes it by any means, but we at least would have tried more things, had more tools at our disposal, I guess. Great, thank you for that discussion.
Okay, um, CNI report is next, we have Stephanie.
All right.
More of the same topic, just kidding, just kidding.
Um, so actually, we just asked them to do this together to share a little bit about, um, you heard Laura talking about tier one and a little bit about tier two and tier three, and so just wanted to give you. And so just wanted to give you kind of a high level explanation of the multi-level systems of support. And so, um, in past conversations, wherever you've heard us talk about RTI, response to intervention, um, or response to instruction, sometimes it's referred to as. We've also talked about on behavior side PBIS and some of those pieces. And so this data number of years ago said, honestly, we're talking about a whole child that needs some academic support sometimes and some behavioral support. When we talk about a multi-level systems of support, we also want to talk about, um, the development and support of a whole student on the top end and at a struggling level. And so that is kind of what that idea of MLSS or multi-level systems of support is. Is supporting that whole child academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally. And so when we look at this graphic, we can think of our two district goals of increasing student achievement is like the left side, that academic instruction. Um, and increasing student empowerment is that behavioral side. And so, um, as Amy brought up before, thinking about those numbers of percentages of where they are shooting for. For, um, getting the, the needs met of our students, um, that students should be able to demonstrate that sufficient progress through that core instruction, that green. Both behaviorally and academically. And so, um, we've certainly done a number of things over the years, investing in core resources. Um, maybe you heard mentioned earlier, um, on the academic side, investing in social emotional learning for all kids on behavioral side. Um, and then providing supports up along the way for students that might be struggling as well as students that are achieving above where they are. And so, um, as we think about this, um, we know that, as it says on the bottom there, it's a really important piece. Um, that whatever we might layer on top of for a tier two or tier three needs to be in addition to that core instruction. And so, um, whether it's academic or behavioral, um, to provide that next level of targeted or selected, um, support. Uh, and so I just wanted to kind of remind you of this structure, um, or share it with you, um, if you're newer to this work. Um, and just also, um, as we think about our system, we've done a lot of different pieces to really address that core. Because as you looked at our data earlier, um, and you've seen it for in the past as well. Um, really what the research says is we have to dive deeply into fixing those issues at the core. When we have such low percentages of students that are making that at or above grade level, um, achievement. And so we've definitely put a lot of concerted effort there. Um, but as Dr. Sieberson was sharing, we also recognize that because we had some holes in some of our core instruction in the past. Most of our, well, I want to look at you all and so that I can't look around the hole. Um, we know that we have some pockets of skill gaps that have moved up through the grades. And so we have to really talk hard about, we recognize that and know that that has impacts on the achievement of the masses. And so we have to do something about that. And so, um, we're going to talk about some things that we've been talking about as administrative team, um, here in just a minute. Um, so before we do that, I just wanted to share this with you. Um, so this is put out by DPI and the Wisconsin RTI Center PBS, um, network. And so it's just a graphic that kind of talks about our system as a whole. And so, um, in your packet, you had a more expanded view of this where we took this graphic as a district. And really talked about what do these pieces mean for us? And so, um, I'm not going to go through the whole thing because you already had it and were able to read it. Um, but just to point out a couple of pieces. Um, that equity is really at the center, that we really want to provide systems that support all of our students. Um, and that's a really important piece for us as we move forward. Um, and then around that equity piece, there's really three components. Um, that make up our kind of universal. And so if you remember to the strategic plan that was shared last month, um, those are really the three pieces of the student success pillar. Or the strategic plan, my collaboration, your PLCs, that strategic use of data, and on that expanded version that was in your packet. Um, there was a couple of pieces I pointed to that talking about strategic assessment and the use of data that really should drive decisions. Um, you saw a lot about root cause in that handout, really determining, um, what student's greatest skill deficit area is to start with. And giving them their support there. And to be honest, as a system, we haven't always done that. We've said, you struggle in reading, so we're going to put you in this reading thing that's supposed to help you with reading. But as we know, reading is a whole group of skills. And if we aren't strategic about figuring out what that is and matching that in the right way, it's going to be a bit of an effort and futility. And so we're really working on getting better at that so that we can, um, be much more effective in the remediation or support that we're providing. Um, the high quality instruction, that green piece in the middle there. Um, we've talked about our last, I think it was last month or the month before, I talked to you about our grade eight instructional practices. Um, that really is the highest, most highest impact, uh, research study strategies on instruction. And so really getting super, uh, clear about those with students, uh, with students, with teachers, um, so that that's happening for students regularly, um, in the classroom. Because while there is a boatload of instructional practices that teachers could use, we really, as our data shows, we really don't have time to, uh, mess around not using the most highly impactful ones. Um, and then that last piece of collaboration and related that is the, um, top piece, I think from DPI on purpose. Because it really is, um, supportive of the conversations you should be having in those teams around data and all of those pieces. So that we're truly moving students forward. Any questions that you had when you looked at that handout that was in your packet?
I think when you look at educational success, you've got family way on the outside. I think really family needs to be in the middle. And I think you can look at data from all across the world and it's families that are engaged or their students learning. Those are the best predictors of whether or not students are successful.
I don't disagree at all.
Yeah. I, I wish we could connect with that.
For sure. And so, um, as Dr. Sieberson talked about earlier, well, actually, um, I don't know if we've talked about this as a whole group. But you're likely aware that our, um, district will be getting S R two funds, those emergency funding funds that will be coming into the district. Um, as a result of this latest stimulus package, so to say. Um, and so we've been talking about recognizing where we are with student achievement, um, recognizing that we have these gaps that are somewhat longstanding in the district. That have been, um, exacerbated by COVID, as was mentioned earlier. Um, really talking about hopefully leverage these dollars to support, um, closing these achievement gaps and really, um, making that difference for students. And so, um, we've been talking as administrative team and we haven't formally, that's not a formal recommendation to the board yet, but eventually we'll probably bring something forward to you. Um, some of the things that we've been talking about, um, is leveraging these dollars to be responsive to these gaps. Um, to be a little bit more effective with our MLSS system. And so, um, thinking about that universal, um, we really have done a lot of work in that area in the last several years, investing in resources. Um, spending this time on the grade eight instructional practices is kind of ongoing work. Um, and supporting the implementation of both of those, um, really will help support that universal. Um, so as I mentioned before, we really have to talk about what are we going to do in that targeted level, that tier two, um, even into tier three level. And so this really needs to come alongside core instruction. Um, this is really the area that we need to support. Because we have a larger number of students that are multiple grade levels behind, we wanted to get really specific about what that support could look like. And so, um, getting down to that root cause of students, as I said before, and really identifying that skill deficit. Um, we know that we have, um, implemented some of that at, uh, the elementary level, specifically at Red Creek. And although the percentages, um, are not where we want them to be, they're very close to the state average. And so when we think about that bar, um, that's kind of our first goal is let's get our kids to the state average and then definitely towards that eighty percent. And so, um, we recognize that we, um, we'd like to attach some, or we'd like to leverage these dollars to really support this. And so, um, we know that we've got students at the middle school and high school level that specifically, um, that have larger skill deficit areas. Um, we don't have as many dedicated interventionists at those levels. And so the long and short of it is that what we've talked about is really using these funds to, um, to hire some interventionists. In, in those upper levels to be specific about closing those gaps. And so at the high school level, um, and again, just a thought right now, but wanted to kind of share it with you as a possibility. Um, adding a, someone specific to math in the area of high school and really looking down at what is that lowest level skill that they're lacking? And building those up to close those gaps. Um, same with ELA, if somebody hired with a reading specialist license, that would be able to work on specific reading skill development. Um, with our students that are struggling there. Um, we already have a reading teacher at the middle school, but adding a math teacher there, um, to just do that intervention and that gap closing work. Um, and then perhaps sharing someone across elementaries in, as an additional person as well. Um, really focusing on those foundational skill gaps, early literacy gaps to close some of those pieces before they get up into those upper levels. And so, um, again, the bulk of that would be staffing because to be honest, when we think about closing these gaps with the current people that we have that are full-time teaching, it's very complicated to figure out how to, um, leverage their time. And they're still needing to support that core. When you remember that pyramid, it says this needs to come alongside of or be on top of the core instruction. And so, um, it's, we've been a little hamstrung in the past with people to be able to do that. And so although these S R funds are temporary funds, um, we really did feel like this is a bit of an opportunity for us out of a crummy situation of COVID. Um, at least there's an opportunity that we could leverage these dollars and try to put some systems in place, um, with some people and some programming. Um, and really leveraging, looking at data to place students very specifically, um, in hopes that we can close some gaps over the next couple of years. So the S R funds are, um, coming to us at some point, maybe this spring or summer. We're not exactly sure when they're actually coming to us. But once they get here, we have until September of twenty twenty-three to spend them out. And so that gives us an opportunity to play it forward a little bit more. Um, when they first came, these ones that we got earlier this year, we weren't sure when we had to spend by. And so that's, we have a little bit of opportunity to think systemically. And really, when you look at the data, we have a systemic issue. And so we want to have a systemic response. And so, um, again, just wanted to throw that idea at you guys for, um, just some sharing and wanting to find a way to be creative and create some opportunity. Um, in the current situation that we're in. Those are my positive quotes to end the presentation of the opportunity that could possibly be lost. Any questions or immediate thoughts about that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, next on the agenda is the monthly expenditures. They were in your packet. Um, are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Facility project updates.
So in the interest of time, because I want to be able to spend some time on, um, some budget background and stuff, I think I'm going to defer. Um, today I got some new drawings and so I will have Marty put them in moodle tomorrow. Um, they're in the board folder. Um, but they've got some nice three D images and stuff, but I'm not, there's not any significant floor plan changes since the last time we talked about it. So I will ask Marty to put the updated pictures in there and we will forego, unless anybody has questions about it right now.
Oh, that sounds good. Thank you.
I would just, yeah, we're on, on track and, and by our March meeting, they're going to have, uh, preliminary, our first, um, bid package will be ready. Uh, to start looking at the H V A C stuff for the middle school, high school. So that'll be nice to get some concrete numbers to add to that budget.
Okay. Okay, preliminary budget review.
Yeah, three board members who haven't had this, uh, the joy of this process. And so I, we talked and decided a little background filling would be helpful for everybody, so. Okay, all right. As Dr. Sieberson said, I just kind of wanted to start kind of at the base level to make sure everybody starts from the same foundation as we go forward through this process. Um, we'll be talking about the budget every month from here on out until we've set it. Uh, the admin team has been working behind the scenes the last couple of months, talking about different proposals, talking about ways we can balance the budget. So, um, you know, it's really interesting because we're actually working in three budgets in, at one time, or at least in my brain I am. We just finished last year's, uh, audit for two thousand nineteen, twenty. Our fiscal year is July through June, so that just happened. We were just done with the June twenty twenty audit. Uh, we're working in the current year, obviously, and then we're working in, and looking at next year for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, and then we do some budget forecasting in there too, to try to look out a little bit further. So although the further we get out, a little bit more difficult to predict because of the biennium budget. I mean, even today, I don't know what next year factors will be. And that's not unusual. It's a little bit easier in the second year of biennium, but always in that first year, we, we don't know what factors we're playing with. Um, so like you said, we're, we'll be talking about the budget for the next few months. In June, you'll set a preliminary budget, again, based on estimates though. Um, because we don't know the final student enrollment until after the third Friday in September. Already three months into our budget year, if you didn't get that. Um, equalized value is another component that we need to know and that's certified by the Wisconsin Department of Revenue on October first. So again, far into the budget process. And equalized aid is certified by the DPI on October fifteenth. That helps us set the overall tax levy. Um, so the board will set the final budget and tax levy again in October. And then we have a budget hearing at our annual meeting in October to the end of the month. And then after that's all certified, we get the amounts to the, uh, the clerks or the treasurers from each of the municipalities. And they can get that on the, uh, tax, property tax bills. Um, so just a little background on the revenue limit. So the revenue limit is a formula developed by the state of Wisconsin that all Wisconsin school districts must use. It's generated by the total number of resident pupils, so that third Friday count, and it's multiplied by a per pupil amount. Um, so the resident pupils is actually a three-year rolling average, so we don't have as big a shifts perhaps and they average them out over three years. There's also hold harmless for declining enrollment districts so that if you decline too drastically, you don't feel that full, uh, impact of the revenue limit decrease either. So they could kind of give you a little bit of funds to help you with that in the formula. Um, and, and truly the revenue limit functions more as a spending limit. Uh, so you calculate this amount and you basically, that's the bulk of the revenue for the school district for our general operations. Um, to exceed it, you have to go to referendum to do that. So it really is more of a spending cap. So the, the big pieces of the revenue limit are the fund ten and fund thirty-eight. Fund ten is our general operations. Fund thirty-eight is non-referendum debt. We no longer have any non-referendum debt. That's all been paid off. Um, the, the property taxes plus state equalization aid and, uh, computer aid make the total revenue limit. So for us, for our calculation, and this doesn't look the same for every school district, we're all different. Our property taxes are about thirty-four percent of that revenue limit amount and state equalization aid is about sixty-four percent. So we get about, uh, sixty-six percent total of that and the computer aid from the state and thirty-four percent from our local property taxpayers. Uh, state aid and property taxes actually have like an inverse relationship in the formula. So if you look richer in the aid formula, property taxes might go up as your aid went down. So if you have the ability, as the state says, to share more in the cost, because you look, you put more property behind each, um, pupil. You look richer and they're saying, there you go, district, you can fund that and the state's going to fund less of it. Um, items such as admissions, interest earnings, fees, grants, they're all outside the revenue limit. So those aren't, those are separate revenues that we receive. And we use what's called a governmental fund accounting. So things like our food service is its own fund all by itself. It's fund fifty. We have a community service fund, which is fund eighty. Our debt service fund that we pay our, our referendum debt payments for our bond proceeds is fund thirty-nine and there's others as well. So how we start the process is we look at the live birth statistics on the, um, DHS site. And it's really not a scientific method by any means, but it's something to help us do some trending. Um, of the residents born in Jackson County, how many of them come to kindergarten five years later in the school district of Black River Falls? So we're just trying to look at some trends when we look at that data. I also use a cohort survival method, um, actually three different ways. There's a simple that just promotes everybody a year forward, weighted, looking at the nearest years, a little bit more heavily in the formula. And then averaging the years and looking at that. So we kind of look at all those different ways to calculate how many kids are going to be here the next year. With kindergarten being the toughest to, um, predict. So this is just, I know you can't read this, but this is like a chart that we use. Um, the actual births are on the left side of the columns showing the year that, of the births. And then I look five years forward and see how many came as kindergarteners to us. Again, that's totally scientific because it could go all over the map. We've had some anomalies. Um, back in two thousand three, we had seventy-three percent came to Black River Falls. More recently, we've had numbers from forty-five to sixty percent. So, you know, seeing that shift downward a little bit, these twenty-year averages have come down. I remember when it was closer to sixty percent. And so they are slightly adjusting downward. Um, again, we usually use this and try to figure out, okay, what's the, what's a good predictor of kindergarten for next year? Um, even though this is saying at about fifty percent, like I said, for the last few years, that's. Even though this is saying at about 50%, like I said, for the last few years, that's 112 students, we're not quite so optimistic because our 4K class this year was 77 students. And I know it's a COVID year, perhaps all those 4Kers didn't come. But even looking at the ranges that we've had the last several years of 80 to 94% of the kids who are in 4K come to kindergarten, you know, or whatever, you know what I mean? Kindergartners came to 4K. That would still be, based on 77, that'd be 96 at the most. I still think that there's a few more kindergartners out there. So we're using, I feel, a pretty conservative number of 100. That's a super small class for the school district. Our average used to be about 125. So I think it's a good conservative number for building the budget. But I'm not sure it's gonna be too far off. We'll see what happens.
I just want to clarify while you're looking at that, because we spent a lot of time talking about open enrollment. This is still resident students, whether they choose to open enroll, oh, it's not pictured on here. This is just residence. So they, that means that fewer percentage of the live births in Jackson County are choosing to live in the school district of Black River Falls limits.
I was wondering if that's a reflection too of the increasing number of homeless families, do we have, no?
Yeah, I don't know. Or it could be available housing, or it could be, right? I mean, this is county-wide data, so yeah.
Again, this is just a picture of what a cohort survival method looks like. We take the prior five years, including the current year, and that's the table up on the top for each grade level. And then the different methodologies to forecast those grades forward for the next five years. So the one highlighted in yellow, you can see the 77 for 4K is an anomaly because we've had 110, 110, 113, 141 as soon as last year, so as recent as last year. So it's really difficult projecting that kindergarten class and it really matters, especially when we have, for example, 154 seniors leaving us and only 100 coming in. So you can see where the declining enrollment situation starts. This is just a quick graph showing that three-year rolling average of our FTEs. When we talk FTEs, we're talking about full-time equivalency for students. So 4K counts as .5, everybody else is a 1. But this is what our projection looks like for that three-year rolling average in a declining mode. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't hang my hat too far out on some of these product. Again, these are predictions, they're estimates. 2026, not all those kids have even been born yet, so you know, we're just, we're trying to use our crystal ball.
I think they're not gonna live here without even being born yet.
So I mean, you can see how complicated and how hard it is to do some of this forecasting. I wanted to let you know what we are using as our base assumptions for the 21-22 budget. So we're talking about a third Friday of September, student FTE of 1669. That is a decrease, like I had mentioned. We're using a $0 per pupil revenue limit increase. This would be the most conservative way to go. So in some years, part of the biennium budget is they give you more money if you put behind each pupil, so that when you calculate your revenue limit based on the number of students, you might see an increase from that. The last few years, they have increased that floor, I guess. They brought everybody up if you were a low-spending district, and we were, from 9,400 to 9,700 to 10,000 this past, this year. So our calculated amount right now is 10,109 for next year. Looking at it, that low revenue ceiling that I just mentioned, looking at a $0 increase that, so we use for this assumption, keeping at 10,000, obviously, we're a little bit above that. Again, to do any change to the state equalization aid allocation, I'm hoping to hear more on that as we go along these next few months. And the main impact of that is what the property tax levy will be. So it's not critical to building the budget right now. We're looking more at the student count is what matters the most as we build our assumptions and some of these per pupil amounts as we build our revenue limit. There's also a revenue that we receive at $742 per student, per pupil categorically. That's been the same amount for the last couple of years. So no increase to that, keeping that at 742. Using these factors creates a revenue limit increase of 149,000. And where this is calculated is by comparing prior year revenue limit for this 20, I would say prior year, but it's the current year, this current year, to next year. And that's what the revenue limit is increasing by on these estimations. We also start the process usually by increasing the amounts for salary and benefits. So looking at what we need to do that pool of dollars to fund our career advancement schedule for our teachers, what we need for any health insurance increases. We're hearing about single digits, we hope that's still true.
It has not been locked in yet for this year, but we're hopeful.
We're hopeful. So hopefully next month, we have some more news on that. And then the other fringe benefits that changed just by what salaries change, that's a $429,000 increase. And by the way, salaries and benefits are 80% of our budget easily. We're a people-rich kind of business, so that is a big part of our budget. I've also taken into account any opening, open enrollment increases for both expenditures and revenues, so that per student amount changes for that. So as students come into our district, we get a certain amount for those students. As they leave, we also send that amount out to other districts. So I kept the number of students the same because we're at a pretty high number of those right now. But I wanted to put in something for any change in that dollar amount, because when you start multiplying that by 50 or 100 kids, it makes a great difference too. So the budget forecast model is, it brings all these different pieces together. The revenue limit, the state equalization aid are, I have a calculation for the AGR that they talked about. We get money for that per pupil, for the free and reduced low-income students that we have in the district in K through 3. All of those things are in one massive workbook that you'd get lost in the numbers, so I'm not gonna share all those. But I just wanted you to get a little sense of what kinds of things are in there. This is just a summary of the FTE changes. It shows what the Fund 10 revenues and expenses are, shows what our fund balance is. And I know you can't read all these numbers, and that's okay. The red numbers though, if you look in the 21-22 school year, we're forecasting that budget deficit after all those things I just told you about, $280,000. The numbers going across to the right are cumulative. So as you fix the year prior and balance the budget, those numbers go down as well. So a little simpler way to look at it. So the change in revenue limit is at the top that I mentioned. The increases for salary and benefits is on that first line, below the line there, showing that $280,000 deficit that we're starting with. And by the way, that's not it for the new board members, that's not a new thing. I mean, that happens, that happens to us almost every year, that we start out in this kind of mode. We're a low-spending district and so we don't, we don't have those funds right away.
The last couple of years, we've been the first budget cycles, as long as I've been an administrator, that we haven't started in a huge hole. And that's because of the legislation that we were a significantly lower-spending district and they allowed, the past legislation that the basement had to be brought up for everybody, at least to this level. We're not at the state average yet, but we had to get brought up some. And so the last two budget cycles have been the least painful in the last four years. This one point.
So then one of the things that we always look at is if there's any retirements, if we're gonna capture any savings from a new hire, from a veteran teacher leaving us, looking at what we pay out in their HRA, do that calculation. So that's, that's shown there, savings of $29,000 so far. And that, again, that's estimated. I don't know what level of teacher we're hiring to replace that person, so that number will be fluid as we go through this as well and change. One of the budget proposals that I had wrote up a memo on was eliminating the transportation dispatcher. So I'm kind of now folding into 9.4 a little bit too. So I'll talk about two of the budget proposals, Shelley chime in too, if you want to. We always look at positions as they leave and just as people leave through attrition, retire, resign, whatever it might be, do we need to refill that position? That's, you know, always kind of our baseline that we do. I knew that Jeff would be retiring sometime in the future, you know, wasn't sure when. And it's something that we've looked at for the last couple of years. Could we do that, cover the duties of that office, the department, transportation department, with one less person? The people who are staffed in that office are the transportation supervisor, the dispatcher, and basically the mechanic. The mechanic's not always in the office, but he is there to do some backup for dispatching when he needs to. He also drives a bus when he needs to. We talked to others, we talked to people in this office. We talked to Kent Wyman and the groundskeeper. Trying to look for a way to do things differently and still cover all the responsibilities of that office. We need to have somebody there during the morning route and during the afternoon route. And as you can imagine, that span is 12 hours long. To ask one person to do that every day, 12 hours, is kind of unreasonable. Plus, we need backups anyway if that one person is gone. So after talking with all the different parties that might be involved, we've come up with a solution that we would cover that morning route from this office, from people from this office, with backups coming from this office to dispatch. And then we would put Christie, who's the current dispatcher, into the supervisor position. And then she would work that later shift, maybe start at 9 o'clock and work until 5:00 or 5:30. Again, we need backups for all those things. We also need to train drivers, that's something we're still working on, but feel we have good former drivers that we could call on to do that as well. Any other things I'm missing about that, Shelley?
No, not really. I mean, there are minor details, but.
That is one of our recommendations that we would be able to capture the savings of that position.
And so as I alluded in my notes, that's something that we're gonna ask you to take action on tonight, so that we can really get that ball rolling. We've talked to all the parties involved and to be honest, I just wanted to highlight for a minute. One of the significant pieces in that puzzle was who's gonna cover the morning route. And we thought we were gonna ask Joey Gilbertson downstairs if she could be the backup. And she goes, you know, I could probably do that every day, but like, what? And she's like, oh my gosh, I could probably just do that every single day. And so in this office, because we have Marty and Jenny and Tammy and Joey, it's easy to cross-train and so that they can help back each other up. And so much of Joey's work, she's gained efficiencies over time as she has done it. And even the reports that Tricia Body used to have to manually do are now electronic. They just get pulled from our system. And so Joey just has this amazing, fantastic attitude. And I would say that our transportation department has, their customer service has been fantastic the last couple of years. There were a lot of times when we had people at our board meetings because they were disappointed in the way things had gone in the transportation department. And they do a great job, so we didn't want to do any damage to the customer service that they're providing. But Chrissy feels great about Joey being her partner, and so Chrissy will do the afternoon, Joey will do the morning, and we'll have a base station here in this office so that anybody can help cover and get some help from one of our new, the new Leonard, the new facilities guy, will be able to help us out. So really, it took, we've got a lot of really, really great people and we talked to them and now like, oh my gosh, I can help do that, oh, no problem, we got that. So it really was a great process and they all feel pretty excited about the new possibility. And there's a fiscal savings to us in the end.
Do you have any questions on that before I hold on?
So Jeff would have to drive a bus every once in a while?
Jeff Walker, he currently does. Jeff Henzel, who's retiring, is actually thinking about applying for one of our routes, so.
Oh, I was wondering if we have enough.
Oh, we are gonna be short. We have like five drivers leaving this year and that's a big, big, big problem, like, big. We lose one driver and we're struggling. It's going to be a really big challenge, we're trying to fill that right now. If you think about uniqueness, you have to be available in the morning and available in the afternoon, but you better be willing to just figure something out for the rest of the day. It's not desirable. So we have been talking about how it could be incentivized, the role of bus drivers as well, because we're gonna need some.
The other proposal that's on there is the building budget allocation change. And this is primarily due to enrollment. So I'll just show you this graph real quickly. So 2021, you can see the actual FTEs for students at each of the schools. And then for 21-22, highlighted in yellow, those are the new estimated FTEs based on all that cohort survival method going forward. So as you can see, all of the schools are seeing a little bit of a decline. So since our building budget allocation is calculated based on the number of pupils they have in their building, they are, some are seeing greater decline than others, and I'll explain why in a moment. We also, through the process, the admin team has been talking and I've heard in my meetings with Melanie as well about Porter Street, she has really struggled to do a lot of the new things that we've expected her to purchase out of her budget and has $0 extra for anything else, do anything extra, to upgrade furniture, to upgrade technology, or anything else that might come up in their building. We talked as an admin team, is there a way to divvy up the per pupil amounts differently so that Porter Street could have a little bit more and take a little bit from each of the other buildings? The other thing that was kind of an unintended consequence, at the time we combined Third Street and Gettard, that dollar amount, that per pupil dollar amount became $227. And as you can see, that's, you know, $22 more than what Porter Street does. And as we talked about it more, it really didn't make sense as to why that was. They have the same kinds of expenses. They use their per pupil amount multiplied by their number of pupils in their building, so why shouldn't it be any different?
And Red Creek was not complaining that they got $22 more, but we finally took a look at that and said, well, maybe that's why Melanie though is broke and Red Creek is not, so.
So we decided to, like I said, take a little bit from the others and make Porter Street and Red Creek the same. The reason for the bigger decreases down below, like the high school and Red Creek, is because they were, they wouldn't say this, but according to the numbers, they were over-allocated. So their allocation enrollment that was used last year, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. Trying to click on it to show you where it is. Was 533 in that first line of the high school, but their real enrollment after everything happened was only 520. So they got an allocation based on 533 kids and they only had 520. So then when you compare their over-allocation to now one that's lower because they have less students and less money behind each student, they're seeing a decrease of about $11,000. Same thing happened to Red Creek, the opposite happened to Porter Street and Middle School. A little bit saving grace for them is they all had big carryovers from last year since COVID happened. Usually their spending is during that springtime of the year. A lot of field trips, a lot of other things going on. We allowed them to carry over more dollars than they typically do, about more than twice as much, actually. So they have those dollars this year to make some intentional purchases this year too, to help with that. So that would be another recommendation from the admin team, take those per pupil adjustments and capture the savings of $19,000.
And so 9.4 we wanted you to take action on tonight so that they can get started creating their building budget. So once you set those budget center allocations, they can then go back to their buildings and start working on their allocations internally. So 9.4 would be to set those numbers as Jill has right there. And it would, number three and four is actually what we're asking you to approve, the eliminate transportation dispatch and reassign duties and the building budget allocation.
Is there any questions or discussion on those recommendations?
On the per pupil allocation, it's been the same forever and ever. And this year makes sense if they had some carryover. Would you anticipate that next year would go up again for this?
So I know that you ask about this every year, which I know the principals love that you keep asking, and I'm gonna keep giving you the same answer. We have taken, they used to pay for Skyward licenses out of that building budget, which was like $12,000 a year, now that comes out of a district pot. They used to pay for workbooks out of their building budget. In the last couple of years, now those come out of Stephanie's budget. So instead of putting more money in, we've taken some of the purchases out of their building. Would all of you agree with that statement? Thank you! So we have addressed it in different ways, Patty. We agree that their expenses continue to go up, but the inequity between them wasn't okay and we've taken some of those big chunks out. That Skyward license is a big deal and it is something that we make them use as a district, so it might as well come out of a district pot, but that means that it, yeah, so.
I always appreciate the clarification.
It's all good, and so I know you're gonna ask, I just want you to hear from them and I'm not making up the answers, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion to approve the allocations and recommendations as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion approved. Policy Committee Board Report. We have a few that the committee has moved forward for the first reading.
So I don't know if you have any questions about them or want me to give you...
You had those in your packet.
If you have questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, you can see what the committee is recommending.
It wasn't anything real changed other than...
To be honest, this...
To update them.
The suggestion and restraint was to remain compliant with state laws as well.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections on those?
Can I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Dr. Severson's report.
I have a few quick things for you, and then the high school's going to share tonight. Update on the buses, just letting you know that we were able to connect with Pro Vision.
Pro Vision Partners.
And we've been getting type one fuel pumped into our buses. As soon as there's a little bit of space in there, we've been out there. They've got a pump at Four Seasons, and that has been a difference maker for us. Ironically, the four newest buses are the ones that are having the greatest challenge. There was a recall on the part. They got that, they took care of it, the part that did make it start a fire last summer, but they did not have a fix for it yet. And so it's frustrating that our four newest buses are the ones that are having the greatest challenges. So I just wanted to reiterate what our guide is. If the real temperature is minus 20 or if the wind chill makes it minus 30, I put 40 on my sheet, it's 30, then we do the two-hour delay. As you can see today, it was predicted the two-hour delay is only going to help you if it's going to be above that when two hours later. And today at eight o'clock, it was still minus 26. And so the forecast was very, very clear last night. There was additional warnings and so forth out last night, and so that's why we need that change. Sometimes that two hours is enough that just the sun coming out makes like a five, six degree difference, and that matters a lot. I just want to explain this so that everyone understands the rationale. When we decide to do the two-hour delay, sometimes when it's snow-related, it is simply because when the drivers can see the whole road in front of them, they can see if there's drips and so forth, whereas when it's still dark out in the morning, it is really, really, really difficult. So sometimes a two-hour delay is that they can drive in daylight and be able to see what the roads are like in front of them, see icy spots, as opposed to just dark. And then the other challenge with the extreme cold is it's not just about whether the buses can make it, but we have to think about kids that are standing outside waiting for the bus. If one of those buses jells up and they are 20 minutes out of town, we wouldn't know who's waiting outside, or that we could reach all those houses if we started calling them. And that could be a 40-minute delay by the time we get another bus out there. And so it becomes a real safety concern to be able to get a hold of all those kids to get back inside when they're out there waiting for a bus. So I just wanted you to understand that piece. Another topic that we wanted to talk a little bit about, last year when we did our employee handbook, our support staff handbook, we articulated new language, and I think I put the...
You did.
Yep, thank you. This is the handbook language under support staff, and so I'm just going to read that top part to you. We're not talking necessarily about our 12-month custodian and maintenance and secretaries, but the... We're talking about the people who are not necessarily 12-month. So there is employee scheduled for less than 12 months, may report to work on such a day if the day will not be made up with an already scheduled snow makeup day. They may make up on the schedule as approved by their principal or may request to use an available personal leave instead of making up the time. This is the first year that we've allowed our teachers to teach from home on inclement weather days. We have taken the stance per our handbook language that our support staff cannot work as effectively from home. Their tasks are just very different, and we are not able to provide enough work for them to be able to work from home on those days. And so we, this is increased flexibility from where it had been. So let's just say that tomorrow's going to be a two-hour late cert. If you look at the weather, that may be a thing. But let's just say it's a two-hour late cert. We call that, aides have a choice to come in at their usual time and work their full day, or they could not come in for those two hours, and then they have like the next couple of weeks where they have to talk to their principal about, I'm going to come in a half hour early every day for the next little bit, or I'm going to stay a half hour late. They can't not take their lunch. That's against employment law. But we give them that flexibility to make up that time, or they can just simply take leave, a personal leave for that time if they want to. We feel like we're giving some great flexibility. Since the handbook language has been approved, last spring when we shut down, we provided some virtual professional development for our aides and Tammy and several of the principals would participate. So they would do some online modules, and then they would get together on Friday afternoons, and they would talk about those modules and talk about their learning and kind of do a reflection circle, that kind of thing. There have been some aides that have asked if we could do that on inclement weather days as opposed to them coming in. And I said that I couldn't make a change to the handbook without having a conversation with the board first. So what that would mean is that they could come in and work that day, or they could choose to stay home and participate in the virtual professional development with the requirement that they have the reflective conversation with one of the administrators at the end of that week. I'm curious if you have thoughts about that.
Explain the virtual stuff.
So Tammy, would you give us some topics that the virtual, so there was like Common Form Care was one of them. There was a couple on...
I should have it completely up right here.
Oh, perfect.
We did a lot through the Autism Society, and so we did things that had to do with like introduction to what autism is, the purpose of modeling, crafting, reinforcement, response to interventions, scripting. We went through, and I had topics through the American, through the Autism Society. Then I worked through a couple other key people like Paula Pooh and Shelley Moore. And we set up approximately four weeks' worth of complete online training that they could participate in. And so then they logged their hours each day and that they had gone through all of that. And then on Fridays, we had an elementary reflective group and then we had a middle school, high school reflective group. Where that was kind of the power of it is that we were, we talked through what they had gone through with that online training. And so that was really very beneficial and things that they could take back. One of the things we did is where they could look at different interventions and things that they could try with their students in the classroom. And so they were able to take that right back and use that, so.
And so we have some support staff that it is difficult, if they're one-on-one with a student and that student's not there, it's tougher for them to find meaningful work when they're making up odd hours. However, we have some that like, if you're an LMC aide, there's always reshelving and work that you can do. So the challenge is that the role of support staff is super diverse and not all, not one answer is going to work for all of them. And so they made this request, and so I didn't feel I could change midstream without having a conversation with the board.
So the intent would be that they would have to pre-approve this before, so they would know individually, yes, I'm approved to do this, or no, I'm an LMC aide.
Yep, like the principals would work with them and say, yep, you definitely have meaningful work to do anytime that you're able to do it, as opposed to the aides that would say, I'm one-on-one with a student, I can help clean and I can tidy up and I can, you know, but there's not as much work, so, yes.
And then the other thing is, the verbiage you used was by the end of the week.
So we tried to do it in a time, a paid period, so that they were into overtime is really what that's about.
I'm just afraid if a snow day happens on a Thursday or Friday, I don't want you to create a rule that you're going to immediately break.
Yep. We tried to do within a paid period so that the people that work six and three-quarter hours, we have more leeway. But if they already work eight hours, we don't want to get into an overtime situation in another week, so.
So they do, I'm sorry. I say, do you feel that's valuable?
If they require the reflection afterwards, I do think it is valuable use of their time. Because you think about how many support staff we hire throughout the school year. They're not here in the beginning for all of our front-loading and our training and that kind of stuff. And so as they're hired throughout the year, any opportunity for them to just focus on their tools, I think is value added. But again, not all support staff positions are created equally, so.
So I was going to ask, do they have like a certain pool of virtual learning that they're working from?
TMA, yeah.
So yeah, I put it together, a little schedule of opportunities that they could choose from. And it kind of the beauty of this is that they could, they can do this anytime. They could do it, and not that this is preference, but they could do it at 10 o'clock at night if they want to. So it gives them the flexibility of anytime through the day, but there's a whole variety of options for them to choose from based on what they need.
One of the complaints we give when we say you can make, like if it's a whole day and we say you can make it up in the next two weeks, some of them have other jobs, and so it's tough to figure that, and then some have young kids, and so they don't all have that flexibility. I feel like we are trying to meet them, and I feel like we're, as an hourly employee, to have that flexibility to either come in or not, I feel like that is great flexibility, but it would serve multiple purposes if it was going to be dedicated professional development time as well. Last spring during our closure, we required so many online modules each week and how many hours they were supposed to be working on that each week.
Seems like, yeah, twag is a meaningful use of their time, but it seems worth it though.
Is there anyone that feels strongly to the contrary? Tammy, looks like we're talking tomorrow to see what we can do, all right?
I actually have the eight hours put together, but it isn't...
I'm shocked. Just kidding. Thanks, Tammy. And that is it for my report, but I asked Chris and Tom to put something together for you guys, so they're going to come up and share. Each have different pieces, all about the same story, though.
Yes. So mine is a part of the slideshow update.
You can just have that, that's why, that's why you can just talk to them.
Yeah. Talk about our Wednesday interventions and kind of the updates that we've had since we first began this in our first trimester. When we first began, it was more of a, how can the teachers connect with students and improve the academic success or the skills that they were working on? So as Tom and I worked with staff, we really focused on how can we make those efforts more efficient, more effective, and continued with that process, basically up to the point where we, as a district, had to go virtual for everybody. So when we came back, some of the changes that we made was to start to require students, you've got to get in here for intervention time. It's no longer voluntary. And so we really had to look at how can we create a vehicle for that to have the teachers request students? How do we organize that? How do we communicate with the parents? So we looked at Great Guardian, which is a feature of Canvas, and put in some new labels or tags for our students. And now a teacher on Thursdays and Fridays can request a student for next week and request them in different ways. They can request students who won't do the work. So basically, we just need somebody to help them to do the work, you know, kind of a person when they don't, when they take a break too long, you get back on them and keep them going. I have the students who are the can't do's. So these are the ones that have some skill deficits, and so we really need to connect them with the teachers to figure out what skills are missing and kind of address that before they can catch up. And then the last is teachers can schedule their own interventions, so they'll handle it. They just need 20, 30 minutes with a student, make up a test or things like that, and organize it themselves. So we started doing that in January. Our first couple of weeks, you know, it was growing and growing to about 100 to 110 students who were getting requested a week. And following with our attendance, we'd get 70, 60 to 70 students coming in on Wednesdays.
I'm sorry, you probably said it, but I didn't hear it, so I'm not sure. But this is that Wednesdays where all high school kids are virtual, right? Those were out there. Okay, perfect, go ahead.
How did they come in? Did they physically come into the building?
Yes. Yep.
But do we bring them, or do they have to?
So they can ride the bus in. Some do half-days. Some come in, they get their breakfast, see a bunch at noon, and...
There's only red buses for that.
Yep, so.
Their normal route. There's not a separate route for that. They would have to get on their normal route.
So now we're working on the behind-the-scenes part to make our system more efficient. Positive attendance to track the students, you know, you should already, you know, did the math, you know, there's 30 kids that didn't show up. Is it the same 30 every week? Or what can we do to support those kids, to help with barriers, those kind of things, get them connected? Dr. Severson and Mr. Chambers worked with the Hochchup Nation to open up the D1 Center on Wednesdays for the interventions to increase access for students to get support. And I believe we sent three or four of the teachers per shift.
Yeah, we have four teachers there in the morning and four teachers in the afternoon. And so far, we've had one who has been there all day to coordinate things, and others, and three that'll switch at a different time. And then we have also staff from the Hochchup Nation that are there. And there's an evening session where we have district staff from, from us and some Hochchup staff where they're per evening session. The middle school, the middle high school.
Do you have any idea how many kids were out there last Wednesday?
Oh, I know you can ask about that.
No, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It was about 12, I think, all together, the three sessions together the previous days, the first and second one there was about, it was like six, seven days.
Yeah, I was just hoping it was growing, so I said, all right.
So you mentioned the staying later or the different shifts. We're also doing that at the high school, offering the internet cafe until 4:30, 5 o'clock, twice a week. Again, to just have the building open for people who have Wi-Fi concerns or that bandwidth. They may have internet for a while, but you know, once you use up your data, then it slows down, so they have access to the building. Today, we met with our, we have three building aides, a floating sub, and one of the counselors that we share with Mobile School. We met with them today to really work out strategies to empower our students, to work within our school goals. The students who are here a week after week, you know, how can we help them with their organization? They're showing a need. What can we get them to push themselves? Do you have kits for themselves? Connecting students to the teachers, it's still amazing, even as high schoolers, how they will absolutely not ask for help or try to hide, even when they come in for an intervention, they still try to hide. So talk to those folks about, you know, get those students connected to the teacher. Tier-two support, I use a Mr. Marine for study skills, again, teaching students how to do school. There's somewhere they're missing those skills. Maximizing time, and then we also talked about using Canvas as a way to track the attendance so we can improve that connecting with the families or the students who aren't coming in. Any questions from you on the Wednesday interventions?
I just wanted you guys to hear the update because as we have five days a week in the other buildings, that one at Core, it was exciting to hear that, you know, we're up to 70 students coming physically into the building on those days. And now, some of them are kids that go virtually the rest of the time, right? And some of those kids come in when they know it's going to be a small group like that, so I think that's a great effort. And how quickly, you just think about how slow change is sometimes, and yet this year, how many systems we've put into place so incredibly quickly to try to be responsive is just, to me, I'm just so proud of the work that is being done. So all in an effort to support the kids every opportunity we get, so. Thanks. And then the high school has another creative thing coming up that Mr. Chambers is going to talk about.
So I'm going to add a couple of things to what Mr. Stahlheim said, just a reminder that there's, are still classes going on on those Wednesdays. They're shorter, morning half-hour classes, so all students are receiving instruction, receiving material for a full day's worth of school. It's hard for the kids sometimes to remember that. That's why I sent an email out there every week, reminding it's the school day today, even if you get to sleep in a little bit longer. And so the students who are coming in are getting another layer of support on top of that. We have, we actually run our bowels in the school for those half-hour blocks when the kids are there. And they, some of the teachers require, it's really, it's, it's, just like we're saying, we're in a strange era right now because the idea of synchronous education, the asynchronous education is really blending here. So some of the teachers on Wednesday, they will send out a message to the students and say, here's the, here's the plan for today. I'm going to be here in my Zoom for these 30 minutes. You don't all necessarily have to be here, but if you have questions, I'm here, come and meet with me, but here's what you need to get done. Some of the teachers say, I need you all here at this time. We're going to go through some things. So it's, it's a mixture of what happens, but, but each kid is, is receiving that hour's worth of work with a half an hour dedicated to each, each of their classes. Lost my turn then. There was one other thing I was going to mention about the Wednesdays. Oh, I know what it was. The students, the, the support staff at the high school too are meeting with a lot of those kids who are either requested to come in and don't make it because of whatever reason, or kids that aren't requested to come in but need some extra support. We have staff that are connecting directly with them. We have staff that are connecting directly with them on those Zooms and, and, you know, meeting. So not everybody that, not only the kids, the seventy kids who are coming in are getting some, some special one-on-one or one-on-two support, but we've got a lot of kids that are getting that throughout the day, whether they're actually in our building or whether they're in our, our digital buildings. So, great, I'm gonna talk really quick about our status right now after almost two trimesters. So the first trimester that we completed in November, we saw a significant increase over last year's first semester in students who did not earn the credit for their course they were enrolled in. And you layer that on to a spring semester of last year where that also happened where due to the COVID shutdown last spring, we had a significantly higher percentage of students who didn't earn all of their credits. This is where we're at right now as of this morning, thirty-three percent of all grades that high school students are earning right now would not earn them credit if this were the last day of the trimester. That is all students, every grade, every class. And so if you go to the next slide, we can slice this into different groups. So here are the online students, these are students that are online a hundred percent, nearly half of all their grades, they're not passing in this one. We go next, and you'll notice it switches between Monday and Sunday, that's just because of the last grade that were updated there, so it's, I pulled this data today, but for some reason, some of them showed just the Sunday. White students, this is interesting because it flips, you notice it's thirty-one percent is dark blue, that means A's, but twenty-five percent of the grades for all the white students are failing, whereas for all of the students, it was thirty-three percent. Next one. Non-white students, it's fifty-three percent. So, and again, as Shelly mentioned before, this is not a new gap, this is not something new to us. We, we have been working on this for many, many, many years, however, this definitely has been exacerbated by the pandemic. Okay, next. And these are socioeconomically disadvantaged students, so all races, all gender, all years, all abilities. And also nearly half of the grades are those students who are not from our affluent or non-socioeconomically disadvantaged group. Next. For special education students, is that just a little bit over the total average? Which I think this is interesting because in a normal year, our gap between students with special needs and our, and our non-special needs students is normally much, much larger than this, this is a very, very small gap. So, and I attribute this to a tremendous effort on our special education teams part.
Question, Tom, is this, so, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is a lot of your special education students weren't online? Is that correct? A lot of them were pretending?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, so part of this driver might be that they were receiving in-person instruction versus some of the gap we're seeing with the online, is that?
And I will further say, even during that time that we were closed for all students, those.
A lot of these students, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess that, that was.
But they still came into the building, we still invited, we had over a hundred and fifty special education students coming in every single week, even when our buildings were closed.
Yeah, that was my question, I think I just worded that the most awkward way possible.
No, no. We got.
It's okay, Dave.
I'll write down my question.
Okay, so, I think there's one.
Nope, that's it.
That's it, okay, all right, so, and I'm not sure.
Because it wasn't meant to be depressing, so close.
All right, close.
Now it's in time.
I did show that to you to be depressing, but I did show it to you in order to, to describe the situation we're in right now at the high school level, when you have that many students who are gonna be short credits or who are short credits, we've gotta do something in a hurry, because as Shelly was saying before, the, the idea of saying, well, no problem, you can, you know, we're gonna be here for, for years and years, so you can just keep coming back and earn your credits whenever you are, that just doesn't happen. We need to, to get something going right now. So what we did last, starting a couple of weeks ago and moving into last week, we looked at the third trimester and said, we've got an opportunity here. We can take the courses that students need to remediate and earn those credits in, and we can pull them out of courses that they, that aren't required courses, and have them take those classes third trimester, earn those credits back, and then we would go into our summer school program, which we are working on adapting and changing as well, to offer additional credit recovery opportunities. So we have about sixty students right now that we have rescheduled for courses that they had previously failed, either first, second trimester this year or the second semester last year. They'll be taking those, those classes over, and we're doing it in two different ways. The first way is, we have our core teachers, so science and English and social studies, who are gonna be looking at what those kids missed in the courses they failed. So we're gonna get right down into each, each individual kid, and, and let's say there were twelve or fifteen outcomes, twelve or fifteen standards that a student needed to learn for that particular English course. Maybe they, they got ten, but there was, there were two that they didn't. They're gonna focus on those two or three or whichever, whatever they didn't get, learn that, and then they earn the credit for that course. Then it opens them up to jump into another course and do the same thing in that trimester. Realistically, probably two courses that, that way would be a realistic hope for students. Other students, we, we unfortunately don't have the, the number of core teachers to be able to pull all of those sections together. So we have some of our elective teachers who we're gonna have students working with, and we're gonna use a curriculum. It used to be called Plato, it's now called Edmentum. It's an online curriculum that we have used for the past three or four years in our summer school. And we also use it in the Phoenix Program at Gebhardt for our students. And those are courses that are aligned to state and national standards, and they can be used as prescriptive curriculum as well, where, where you can look at, either the teacher can assign specific material, specific lessons and competencies that the students need to make, or you can use pre-tests to test the students, and then the system will assign them the, the gaps and the needs that they, that they show up through that pre-test. So we have those teachers being trained this Friday on that, that program, and Tamey is very familiar with that, so she'll be able to help. And so starting third trimester, we're gonna have kids making up credits. One last thing, the Western Technical College also contacted us, and through our contract that we already have with them, they are offering an evening credit recovery program starting next week, I believe. And we have several students who have signed up for that, it's a one-night-a-week opportunity for two and a half months, I think, goes into April, and they can earn credit back that way, so we push that out as well to students, so.
So I asked them to highlight for you because we heard all of the challenges, the disengagement. I, it, it, this trimester opportunity would not have existed if we had not moved to trimesters, right? It's a full semester, a full semester, so now we're gonna have kids who failed English nine semester or try one. In the third try, they're gonna retake that class already, I mean, it is some incredible adaptability. And you just heard how many teachers who have been, I'm a teacher of this, and now, oh yeah, I'm also gonna be remediating credits for kids along the way. Again, I just need to recognize the amazing flexibility and adaptability and just the commitment to continue trying to find as many ways to get at these kids as we can. The other thing that I would just highlight about what he described is that if you need proficiency on these three pieces, these three outcomes, we're gonna do that, and then you can move on. That really is that mind shift from standards-based to standards-based education from seat time, right? There was a thinking that you failed this class, you owe me butt in seat for how many hours to show that, you know, you've been through this class again, as opposed to here's the outcomes you need to demonstrate that you have proficiency in all of these skills, you're gonna stay here until you've demonstrated proficiency, and then good luck, go grab that next class that you need credits in. So there really is a pretty big mind shift when you think about punitive seat time versus standard-based education. I can, and I've shown my mastery, and now I can move on to something else, so. So many things happening all at the same time.
So Will, have this, has this been communicated to those students who are gonna be affected by this?
Not completely, I don't know.
They're working on making the schedule changes and what sections are available from teachers, because teachers already have classes scheduled for third try, and so now it's a matter of, we have this many kids who need English nine remediation, and now what teachers can do that. So it's a messy process, but that might be the first round of parents saying, my kid signed up for this, now you're telling me they're taking this. And so hopefully, they look at it as an opportunity to collect that credit as opposed to anything less than, but that is an excellent.
Well, that was something I was wondering too, is, is it communicated to the parents as well as the students that this is taking place?
Yeah, yeah.
It will, we first have to build the structure as we're flying, so the trimester changes March.
Jigsaw puzzle.
March third, March fourth, with fifth is the end of the trimester. So hopefully, and then next.
My, my hope is that we'll have, have everything laid out by the end of this week and be able to communicate that out either at the end of this week or early next week.
You're essentially building a whole new schedule for third try, teacher assignments and student schedules, that's a big deal, big deal.
Yeah, you think the councils were twitchy about going to trimester.
And one of them is out having a baby, mind you. So it's Sue, Sue's twitchy. Thanks very much. Okay, thank you.
She's waiting to worry for her frog things for a while, because she's got so much other things to worry about.
Anyway, I hope that was informative for you guys, I just am really proud of the amazing efforts happening. The adaptability is just unreal.
Okay, we'll quickly go through our conference attendance, and I already copied off this document for you. I did attend the Virtual Equity Conference that was held through NSBA, and this publication was recommended. And I thought since when we did our board evaluation, our district has not established an equity statement, and this is kind, this was recommended as, as a guide to look at that. So she shared that with you, look at it at your leisure. And the state conference, we, we talked briefly about that at our board development, but I know Mary, anyone else have anything to share about that? Okay, school board connection opportunities, anything new on that schedule?
I do not have anything to add right now. Um, March third, if anyone wants to read the address for Dr. Sue's birthday? I have signed up and I'm no longer available, so if someone wants my slot, you could certainly have that if you're available, so let me know.
Okay. In the standards-based grading, we talked about individual grades for projects and separating behaviors from academics.
Okay, future agenda items?
Just for clarity, we had said that we were gonna do a standards-based education at one of our upcoming board development sessions. Right now, I have, for that March eighth date, I have my evaluation portfolio in conversation, more discussion about that grade advancement policy and, and that bigger picture discussion. I want to give you guys some highlights on Google Drive, because I think we're going to move our vehicle for how the board meeting materials are presented, instead of Moogle, gonna go to Google, if that, make, if you're gonna articulate that with the mask on, and so we'll look at that briefly. And then I did want to bring back the board evaluation tool, because we did it, we discussed it real briefly, and then we didn't really set any goals as to which one of those areas we wanted to talk about. I don't know if that is most appropriate in March, or if that is more appropriate after that, but an equity statement might fit with that board eval or a standalone. I just am wondering if that is something you also want to discuss at that board development session, the board eval document.
How does everyone feel? I mean, we, we might have a new board, we might have many new board members in April, so I, I don't know. I, that's my feeling, I don't wanna jump into a lot of hard work and then have us not be present, so. Okay. Then I guess we're ready to adjourn, and just a reminder that the election is still happening, whether the weather is cold or not. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, thank you, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you very much for your time and attention, Tamey.